We're ready, okay. Okay, it is 7:06 PM on Thursday, June 10th, 2014, and this is a continuation of a hearing before the Hingham's zoning board of appeals on the application of Global Power Assets, LLC and New Singular Wireless PCS LLC, the petitioners for use variance from Section 5-E, 5 dash E, Paragraph 4, dimensional variance from the setback requirements of Section 5 dash E, Paragraph 7-D, and a special permit A2 under Section 5 dash E along with a waiver of the 100-foot maximum height requirement under Section 5 dash E, Paragraph 7-C of the zoning bylaw, and such other relief as necessary to construct a multi-user personal wireless services facility consisting of a 120-foot cell tower and land of Anchor Plaza Realty Trust located at 207-225 Lincoln Street in Residence District A. Okay. We've received some additional information since our last session that we should probably go over. We've received a request from some of the residential abutters to make a presentation that if they are prepared to do so, we'll hear that tonight. We've asked for some additional information on qualifications of the radio frequency engineers which has been submitted and all that, but I guess if you want to bring us up to date on the additional information, the new information that was submitted. And I guess we got some derived test results as well. Yes, if you could. And I should --
Yeah, lift it up.
I would be remiss if I didn't remind people that we are recording this for cable television as well as as required under the provisions of the state open meeting law. So, and if, okay.
So, Mike Lawton, SAI, on behalf of AT&amp;T. In terms of additional information, there were the plots that we brought last time, which I think now you have copies of via email as of, I think it's last week. We also had a letter that, or a memo that you may have received yesterday, that we have copies up here as well.
Yeah, this one, okay. Yeah, we have that, okay.
And so basically, the information here was in response to a couple of questions that we had been asked. Specifically, the first one was to provide information about the size of the gap, the land area based on the prediction plots, and the road distances based on the drive data. Of course, they have to be measured that way because the drive data represents only coverage on the roads where the land area represents coverage in two dimensions.
Right.
So, we can't really do an area calculation on the roads, and to do a linear calculation on the area would be somewhat meaningless. So, what you have in the three tables, the first table, under number one, is the, based on prediction, based on the plots that we provided, which I can -- Based on these, plot out, just over here. Based on the prediction area, the plot that we showed last time, which also came via email, the --
Would you mind bringing that closer to --
I'm sorry? Yeah. Should I put it to these people?
Yes, yeah. I think behind this table.
Maybe here?
How about right behind that table? I think we, is that good, Joe?
Yeah, let's turn it a little more towards those. There you go.
There you go.
Is that okay?
Yeah, okay.
So, then, basically, the three columns, the total area of Hingham is fixed. The cellular is this plot, basically, showing the area of coverage within Hingham inclusive of area that falls off the plot. And then PCS would be --
All right, so on that plot, what we're looking at, so 82 dBm, minus 82 dBm, that's the standard in the first table, right?
Yes, we, in order that we didn't have so many tables.
Yep.
We chose one standard, which is neg 82, which is the acceptable threshold for in-car coverage, in-car portable coverage.
And that's what the yellow represents?
That's yellow, and underneath the green would be yellow as well, because it's stronger than yellow.
Okay, yeah.
So, the yellow would be inclusive of the green.
Okay.
So, we have cellular, and this is, this is showing coverage, is a kind of out of order from the table that you see, but -- I'm sure it's the last one. So, we don't have to show here today, we don't have one without the church coverage. This is the smokestack, this is the church, and this is the proposed new location. So, the calculation that we did, the first row, the existing coverage prior to MA 2702 would be coverage inclusive of this, but not of this, because this, that was to correspond to the picture prior to the church coming on the air, which is maybe two months now, I believe.
Yeah.
Then the second, the second row --
I don't even, I don't understand the first row. It says existing coverage prior to MA 2702. So, the first row says total area of Hingham, 22.5.
Right.
What does that represent?
The entire --
Town of Hingham?
Yeah.
Entire, yeah. Okay. And then the second item, still on row one, which is 8.1.
Right.
What does that represent?
That represents the area within the town of Hingham that's covered by current AT&amp;T sites at the time prior to this site being on the air.
So, this is not accurate in terms of what's currently in place?
Correct. The second row would be the current coverage with this site.
Now, that map doesn't say 2702, it says --
Yeah, it's got a different number.
It says 1284.
Yeah, I don't know why the numbers are different, but it's the same site.
And then the 2.8, still on the first row.
Right.
That is the PCS.
Now, that's the 1900.
Right.
That would be 1900, which would be this one. No, that includes the site itself.
And so, that represents the, the cover, in other words, is this --
This one.
This is square miles covered by PCS prior to 2702?
Prior to this site, yes.
Prior to that site, okay.
So, that would be this area here plus area throughout the rest of Hingham.
Okay.
It's not shown on this zoomed-in plot.
Got it, okay.
So, that was the first row. The second row is identical to the first row, but we've added this site to the calculation.
So, that means the 22.5, obviously, the total area of Hingham hasn't changed.
Correct.
8.8 is the --
So, it goes up by seven tenths of a mile.
Is this --
Seven tenths of a square mile.
Okay. And then 3.1 is the PCS coverage with 2702.
Right, yes.
So, the second, the second row exists, is current conditions, if you will.
As it existed.
Okay, got it.
As it existed, right.
Okay.
And then the third, the third row is the future coverage, which would be calculated off of this, of this paper here. And that, for example, that one's the PCS. There's another one that's the cellular. But, so it's basically showing the, the second row plus the additional coverage provided by the proposed site.
So, if I'm reading the third row correct, again, going through each column, the first one, 22.5, total area hasn't changed, 9.2, so we're up by .4 square miles of coverage for the 850 megahertz, and we're up .4 miles, uh, square miles for the PCS.
Correct.
So, the, the net gain of your proposed site you're suggesting is .4 square miles.
Square miles.
Got it.
That's based on prediction.
Yeah.
Now, there was, and then we went through, we did another analysis, and I had to break it into two tables because of, because there's more information.
Before you leave the first table, just, just so I understand, going from the, let's say the, the 3.1 to the 3.5, which is the PCS, are you saying that that .4 square miles had zero coverage beforehand, or the coverage is better in that .4?
We've, for the, for the purposes, because it's a, it's somewhat a three-dimensional problem. You know, the, the coverage is not either there or it's not. It's there and it meets standard.
Right.
Or it's below the standard.
Okay.
So, where, so what we set for the analysis is the AT&amp;T threshold of neg 82 for in-car portable coverage.
So, the, going from the 3.1 to the 3.5, the .4 square miles, that's now additional .4 square miles that meet the 82 dBm, that didn't meet it before.
Correct.
And do we know if prior to this, it was it, what was it? Was it .9? What, what?
You mean in terms of what --
In other words, how, how --
The signal level was below the --
Right, and how meaningful a, a gap, if you will, was it? In other words, did people lose calls, were there drop calls? What, what's the standard so that we know it was it, was it a precipitous drop, or it was barely noticeable for this .4 square miles that you're talking about?
You know, here also, we didn't go below that threshold, so it's, it's hard for me to give you a showing of that, of what's below it. I mean, it's, it varies, you know? Where you, where you would go in that area, it would be better, it would be worse, it would be, you know? It's basically below neg 82, how far below neg 82 varies by --
Okay, got it.
Where within the area you want.
Okay, got it.
And actually, there's something, we'll get to something later. I may have some more information about that, but --
Okay, thank you.
And then the, the, the second table, and the third table, we took some roads, some sample roads, and we couldn't, and that corresponds to which is this right here. We had a technician come down and drive basically every road where there's color there after the church site came on the air, and, let's see what day that was. Put it in here. Drove it May 12th, I believe. Yeah, Monday, Monday, May 12th. We drove, had a technician in the truck, go drive around and collect all this information. Then, from that information, we, we created the table, and of course, you see five roads here. Obviously, we drove quite a few more roads than the five, but we just took some samples of some, some of the roads in the area. And, of course, this is the 1900, so this would correspond to the third table.
Could you take us through the second table, and then we'll do the third table so we can just --
Okay. So, here's the second table. And, and again, the, the colors and the signal levels are the same as what we show on the prediction. And then the, for the purpose of the analysis, we assumed better than neg 82, so yellow and green were good, black was not. Then we tabulated the road distances using the same logic as with the prediction. It's a little different here because, you know, there's one, one spot where it wasn't good enough, where, in here, there's one spot where it is good enough. So, it has to be somewhat consistent in order to be good.
So, if, can you walk us through each line like you did in the first table?
So, the first, first line is the existing coverage prior to MA 2702, which would come from the prior, the old drive test that we did, that we had filed previously. Current coverage with MA 2702 is this, which, that you see right here.
So, the 1.5 is what?
The 1.5 is the coverage on the old plot, better than neg 82. Now, showing that plot.
Okay, so this is 1.5 miles of Lincoln Street that, that are covered.
Are covered.
Okay.
That were covered prior to the church coming on the air.
Got it. And then the next column is one mile of Downer Street.
Downer Ave., yeah.
Um, Downer Ave., then a tenth of a mile.
Mile, Planters Field Lane.
Right.
Four tenths of Park Circle, four tenths of Thaxter Street.
Got it.
And then, then we took this plot, which corresponds to the second row, because now this site is on the air.
Yep.
Did the same calculation, and Hingham with additional coverage on Lincoln Street and on Thaxter Street.
So, that means --
No change on Downer Ave., no change on Planters Field, no change on Park Circle.
So, the 1.9 means that there was four tenths of a mile additional coverage on Lincoln Street that met the 82 dBm standard.
That's correct.
Got it.
Then the third line, what we did was, it's, it's a, took this and then added the coverage that came from the CW test, overlaid that on here to show what that would add as coverage in the area. Now, from an engineering perspective, you'd want the drive data to be collected at the same time, but we can't really do that because the drive data, the survey data that we collected at that time when we did the CW test did not include this site because it wasn't on the area. So, we throw, but, but in order for, in order to capture the same foliage, the same, you know, snow, or, I mean, I think the, the original CW test was done New Year's Eve, something like that. It was, was quite late in the year. So, you'd want, had we been able to do the third one, the future coverage, in a pure engineering way, there, we would have needed to somehow simulate this being on the air at that time, or go back and redo the CW test to have a direct comparison. But, what we did was, we laid CW test onto this and looked at what it, looked at what the site would cover that was uncovered here, knowing that they're a little different. Then, the third table.
So, hold on. So, this plot shows all three sites active?
No. This shot, this plot does not show this site active.
Does not, okay.
This is the existing network condition today.
Okay.
And so, what we did was, we overlaid the CW data that we collected in December.
Yeah.
Onto this.
Okay.
To look at where that would fill in.
Okay. And black is bad, but yellow and green are acceptable?
Basically, the way that, the way that AT&amp;T defines these thresholds for UMTS, black, anything that would be black would be unacceptable at this band. This is cellular, so it's 850.
850, yeah.
Anything between neg 74 and neg 82 is acceptable for coverage measured on the street to provide coverage with a portable inside a car. So, it takes into account a loss figure for the, an approximate loss figure for the car. Then, neg 74 is the threshold that is, takes into account an additional loss figure between car penetration and an average building, whatever an average building is. Average buildings are not very prevalent, but it's, you have to use something for, so the ATB gets within most buildings, not to the basement, not, not into the densest part of urban buildings in Boston, but, you know, single-family homes, it's pretty good. So, those are the calculations that we did here in response to number one.
I'm not sure I followed the, the third, the third chart here.
So, the third, so, the third is the same logic.
Mm-hmm.
Except instead of looking at cellular 850, we're now looking at
The PCS 1900.
Yeah. This plot. That's the second, second row. The same logic. We took the initial plot that we did, the initial drive that we did without the church, then we did the plot, the data that we collected after the church was on the air, then we did the third plot. We, we overlay the CW test at 1900 on this at 1900 to compare what, you could presume the new site we covered. So, that's what the third, the third table is there.
Is this 3G service, 4G service, or LTE service?
What, what we, and, and the Gs are kind of a marketing thing.
Okay.
You, you would say 3G.
Okay.
UMTS is commonly called 3G, but from a technical perspective, the technologies are distinct. Some carriers like to blur the lines of what they call 3G, and, you know? So, from AT&amp;T's perspective, GSM would be 2, 2.5G, UMTS would be 3G, LTE would be 4G.
So, this is not the new technology, this is the old technology?
That's correct. And, and the reason for this, there's a couple of reasons. One was because the application, this application was filed some time ago when UMTS was the main focus. And the other reason is because even today, there's no, in order to use 4G for voice, you need a 4G voice user equipment. Actually, that's not true. There are no 4G voice user equipments that the public can buy yet. The, if, if you're using voice, you're knocked down to 3G. If you're, if you're on LTE, and I know my phone says LTE as well.
Right.
When I'm on voice, it's not true. The, the, the voice itself is on 3G. If you're doing data service, it'll be on 4G. And, and that's just because Apple and the other handset manufacturers haven't produced handsets. They're in testing now, and there was just an announcement, I want to say, two weeks ago, that they were in, they were in prototype testing in Boston, voice-over LTE phones. And, so, we expect them to be out somewhat soon, but we've heard that before.
If LTE was in use, what would be the DBM standard that we would be looking at?
It would be a lower signal level, but LTE also transmits at a lower power. So, it's a, it's, it's, it ends up being, I guess the best way to say it is, it's a completely different calculation, a completely different analysis, because your LTE, for example, LTE exists here. I didn't check today whether LTE's on the air here yet. When AT&amp;T deploys sites, at this point, they're not deploying, GSM also still exists over here. GSM was not deployed here because GSM is being phased out. So, when AT&amp;T deploys sites, it phases out, phase out the old technology. This site will be UMTS LTE only. Eventually, UMTS will phase out as well, once the terminals or the user equipment is available and users migrate, and they're, you know, they're able to move over and load LTE, then the loading on UMTS will drop, UMTS can be removed from service.
But, does any of this data show that there's a gap in LTE in the area that you're looking at?
We didn't provide an LTE analysis for this.
So, does any of this show that there's a gap in LTE?
It doesn't.
Okay, thank you.
It doesn't, because you have to --
I understand you didn't provide the analysis.
Right, and you have to kind of look, the best way to think about it is, it's almost, without oversimplifying it, it's three separate networks. And the LTE network, for example, will have different site parameters, different antennas, different frequency band, different, the link budget is, is very different. The sites transmit typically lower power, and, and so, when you simulate LTE, it, it shows differently. The thresholds will be different. So, in order to look at LTE, you can't really make a direct comparison between the two because there's so many variables between the two networks. It's not a, unfortunately, LTE isn't a simple upgrade where you can, where they're just taking the same equipment and adding upgraded card. It's a, it's an entirely different service, is the best way to describe it. So, that's the first page. The second page, we were asked to, to explain a little bit about --
It's before you move to the --
Okay.
Second page, staying on the first page, looking at the third chart, the future coverage. So, I'm looking at the second column, I'm sorry, the second row in the third chart, which is current coverage with the MA 2702.
Correct.
And in every case, there's, there's no difference except the tenth of a mile on Thaxter Street. Is, is that because the, let me, why is, why didn't the site coming on add coverage to any of these locations?
Particularly Lincoln Street.
I'm not sure. They're asking why, why this is the same.
Why, it went, Lincoln Street went from 0.8 to 0.8.
Yeah.
Downer went from 0.2 to 0.2.
Get better.
But Lincoln Street should have definitely improved.
Yeah, because --
At least the east end, yeah.
This side?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, my, my name is Niket Jocelyn. I'm a friend here with SAI Communications. So, this side wasn't reaching further on the Lincoln, on the Lincoln Street when we did the simulation, whereas when we turned this side on with the CW data, that's when the signal level was reaching, was increasing on Lincoln Street. It was improving on that road. So, that's the reason you are not seeing improvement by this side.
In other words, the site in the, in the tower.
In the church.
In the church isn't strong enough to reach Lincoln Street? Is that what you're, is that what you're saying?
Yes, yes.
But, no, it's, it's almost on Lincoln Street.
This, did you look at this part of Lincoln Street?
Yeah.
No, this is the Lincoln Street.
Yes.
So.
So, when we turned on 1284, we should have seen, we should have seen an improvement on the, the segment of Lincoln Street closest to 1284.
But Lincoln Street, we have calculated up to this point.
Where's, where's the First Baptist Church, church there?
Is it, uh, right here.
It's over here.
And that's not strong enough to get over to Lincoln Street?
Which is just on the other side of the square. Did you --
It's right there, yeah. I mean, Lincoln Street starts right there.
It's up here.
Did you, did you look at this? Where did you stop?
Over here on Lincoln, yeah, over here.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, uh -- So, so you're saying that the, that the First Baptist Church site provides no, no additional coverage for Lincoln Street? Even though it's right there? Is that what you're testifying?
I think he stopped it here.
What does that mean, he stopped it?
He stopped looking at the distance.
So, he stopped the modeling?
Yeah, he stopped the measurement.
But, wasn't the point to actually do that modeling to make the calculation?
See what the impact of that site was.
So, I don't understand why you would stop it when that, that was the purpose of this analysis?
Yeah.
Am I missing something?
We don't have that, no. We do have it as, printouts.
No, I understand the question.
I understand the question.
Yeah.
I'm not sure I understand.
Yeah.
What's been done, but...
And, were these measuring, is this a simulation or is this driving? Because we, this, we're talking about the second row in each of these columns, which are existing conditions.
Correct.
So, is that a, a driving analysis or is that a simulation?
The...
The second row in each of these tables?
The second row is, was the driving.
Okay.
This data, right here.
Okay, the table, the data on the chart, is that, so that's driving?
The, the third row is also driving, but it's simulating putting two data sets on top of each other.
So, if this is driving, then what I'm hearing is that the driving showed no change on Lincoln Street when the church?
I'm trying to, I'm looking for the pre-church drive test.
Okay.
Which is...
Yeah.
This is not covered, right?
Yeah. Over here.
Right.
Was that not covered?
Yep.
It was covered here.
It's because I don't want it.
It's because I don't want it.
Same, okay.
It changes the role from me, right?
You have, you have your computer.
Yeah.
You can redo that.
Yeah, I can do that.
We're going to check that, because this computer is going to check.
So, we can go on and then you come back?
Yeah.
Right.
Perfect. Should I answer, other than that one question? Did we answer everything on the first page?
Let me, yes.
Joe?
Yep.
Okay. Can I use second page?
Second page. Question was raised, last, in the last discussion, last hearing, we, there was discussion of, I made the point that this coverage here that appears to be good is not useful, good between the smokestack site, which is on the air, and the proposed site, which are agreeably close together. And, why, why an overlap here is not a problem, but coverage that's coming up here is a problem from a network management perspective. And, the best way to explain it, I guess, from simple terms, I put a lot of words down there about break receivers and timing advance and all that sort of thing. The best way to explain it basically is that, when we went into the data and we looked at this, this coverage up here, what you find is that it's a point from maybe a site in Revere, and the next point would be coverage from a site at Logan Airport. The next point would be a coverage from a site in Winthrop. And, so, you have a number, excuse me, a number of sites covering this area up here. It doesn't come from the local sites, it comes from sites that are across a large expanse of water. And, from a network management perspective, you can't, unless the customers are completely stationary in that spot where they have good coverage from Logan Airport, or, and they don't go around the corner and Logan Airport is obscured and now Winthrop is coming in, you can't, there's a limitation as to how you can support those customers. You don't want to support a customer on a site that's clear across the bay here, much like, we had the reverse problem back a number of years ago with, I actually was at Logan Airport, sitting in the new terminal, Terminal B, Terminal A, Terminal B, the Delta one. And, I was, I made a call and I was on the Hingham site. And, of course, you walk around the terminal, and at that time, there was no in-building system in the airport. You walk around the terminal and you drop, because there's no, there's no handoff to any of the neighbors from Hingham to Revere, because you just, the, the network can't be managed that way. It, it just creates interference. It creates, you have, you have mobiles or user equipment at a high-power level quite far from the site, which will interfere with mobiles nearby that are at a lower-power level that are on the local sites. And, it, it just creates, so what they, what, in the, in the parameters, what performance engineers have the ability to do is to limit that. Basically, say that if a, if a mobile is over five miles away or over, they can set a, a distance. If the mobile is over five miles away, you can't, you can't support that. So, what that ends up being, this, since this is signal that hasn't been, that, that you can't stop the propagation across the water, the signal is there, but it, it can't support a call because it has no neighbor. And, it, and it, and the performance engineer doesn't know where those calls are. They could be in Hingham, they could be in an airplane. They, they limit that ability for the distant mobiles to be on the network. Similar to, I guess, the best way to describe it is, one of the, the very first site in the network in Boston was on what used to be the Howard Johnson's in, near the theater district. It's a very tall building, and it's a twenty-six-story tall building. That site covered most of what, what's inside one-twenty-eight. And, Hingham was one of the initial sites too, the smokestack. So, at that time, those two sites handed off to each other. Now, there's probably one-hundred-and-fifty, two-hundred sites between the Ho-Jo's in downtown Boston and where we're, you know, in the, in the smokestack. So, in order to reuse the spectrum efficiently, you can no longer allow those two sites to hand over, hand off to each other. So, they have to be restricted from that. And, when you restrict them from that, then any signal that comes from those tall sites across the water or across a large distance then becomes interference, because it can't be used to support a customer. That's kind of the, the, the best way I can explain what I've tried to put into words here. And, also, the other point that I, that I went into was in terms of, so, UMTS has a, has a way of, yeah, so, I went into it later, but, in terms of two sites being too close together, I think you heard last time that that was a problem. It's not a problem. The, it's, it's, it can be a problem if the network is not managed correctly, but there are sites in downtown Boston, I, I took a look and measured off some distances. There are sites, full sites, that are three to five-hundred feet apart. And, you know, these are on seven-story, ten-story buildings. And, what the engineers have to do is to somehow manage the propagation of those sites so that they all work and that they carry the traffic appropriately and don't cover too large an area, I guess is the best way to say it. And, similarly, one of the tools they'll use is downtilt, antenna downtilt. All the antennas that AT&amp;T uses right now have remote electrical downtilt. So, it, it has a, a motor on the bottom of the antenna and an actuator. And, a technician can dial into, or connect into the IP address of that motor remotely and activate the motor, which pulls, which pulls a rod and changes the downtilt of the antenna. So, this is something that the technicians, the, the optimization engineers are doing on a daily basis. They're out improving the coverage and improving the overlap. Something like this is something that, it's not, well, not ideal, I mean, I, I think I've said the number of times that it'd be better if the site was further this way, but it's not something that is, is, should be preventative in any way. It's something that good network design, good site design on these two sites would, would make not a problem in terms of the way they work together. And, then my third, if there are no more questions about that?
Yeah, can I ask a question about that?
Sure.
So, as I understand your, your maps, and just speaking probably in approximations, if I start, if I'm driving down Downer Street out towards the water...
This way?
Right. So, I, I'm starting in what you would consider to be a gap area, and as I head out to the water, all of a sudden, there's, there's service.
Right.
And, it's that service that you're, you're saying is not necessarily the best service?
Is, is not, is not, from a network perspective, it's not...
Okay.
Reliable service.
Got it.
It's not, you know...
So, when, when you did your drive tests, did you experience dropped calls as you went out there?
We didn't, we didn't have an active phone up, so we wouldn't, we weren't doing a, a phone measurement. What this is, is a scan receiver, so it's just scanning the channels, it's not using an active, an actual live call.
So, do you have any data of any calls being dropped as you drive out, up Downer Street?
I don't, other than the one that I dropped out here, last time I was here. But, that's not really inclusive data.
Okay. And, as we're out on, on Downer Street, I thought I heard you saying that, that the signal may have been coming from Logan, it may have been coming from other areas. Have you pinpointed, pinpointed precisely where it is coming from?
It's, and that's part of the problem. When we went and looked at this, there's, there's basically a beacon that's transmitted by the sites, which I referred to in there, it's a PSC, Primary Scrambling Code. And, in order to determine where a signal is coming from, you have to be able to decode that. And, the problem with a lot of this, this up here is that the, the beacon was garbled. And, because we went through and we, what I wanted to do was to be able to show you, okay, well, this came from here, and this came from here, and this came from here, and be able to take it out.
Right.
But, I couldn't take it out because there was, there's a lot of corrupted scrambling code.
Okay.
So, there's no real way to track down where that came from. Some of it was in fact Dorchester and Winthrop.
And, and as you go down, let's say, Otis Street and Otis Hill Road, which are by the water?
Down here.
Right, and there's signal there, do we know where that signal's coming from?
I believe that that signal is coming from a site that's generally right here.
Which would might be in Hall or some...
Not in Hall.
In them still?
I saw a tower.
Turkey, yeah, Turkey.
Turkey, okay.
Yeah, as you, as you're driving along here, you can see a tower over there.
Okay. I mean, what, what concerns me is like, you're, you're saying things which, I understand the logic, but you're asserting conclusions, for example, that the signal's coming from far away.
Right.
But, you're also saying, you don't know where the signal actually is emanating from, that...
And, it's, it's a difficult thing.
You haven't been able to, I, I, I'm not faulting you for not attempting to de-scramble it, you've done it, but you don't have the answer.
Right.
You're not sure.
Well, I know what's not coming from.
It's now coming from the smokestack.
It's not coming from the smokestack, it's not coming from the church, it's not coming from that, that site, that nearby site.
Although, on, on Otis Street, it is coming from over there.
On Otis Street, it is, but this, this, this data up here was what, I didn't really dig into this.
Okay.
I just took a quick peek at that because it's on the water and it looked curious to me.
So, and Otis Street and Downer intersect, so I'm not sure why you're saying the Downer signal is not coming from a local location, whereas the Otis signal is coming from a loaded, a, a local location?
Other than that, we, we, we went into these points and looked at them and were unable to determine where they came from, where we went into these points...
And, you could determine that that was local?
And, we could determine clearly that they're from a nearby site.
Yeah, got it, okay.
It's, it's, you know, I wish I could say it's absolutely from, you know, wherever.
Right.
But, I, but I, without, without being able to decode the scrambling code, there's really no way of knowing where it's coming from.
Right, I mean, but it go, for us, it goes to a couple issues. First, it goes to whether or not that signal is truly unreliable, if you will, because if it's coming from someplace more local, perhaps it's not unreliable. And, second, to the extent that it's coming from a local location, I'd be asking you whether or not you could boost that local location signal to better service the area, but you're not quite sure where it's coming from.
Right.
So, I'm not sure that you can, you can answer that.
And, if, and, and, I mean, the only point I'd make to that is that if, if the scrambling code is corrupted, it won't carry a call. You can't, the loop won't be made. The, the call can't be set up, because the mobile will never respond. The mobile doesn't know what it's responding to, the site doesn't know...
Right.
...where the mobile is. They, they can't really communicate, because the, the link is, is corrupted.
Right, but you also don't have any data that says you can't make a call, calls are being dropped, that it's a problem, and I suspect we may hear from neighbors that they're successfully making calls. So, I'm, I'm hearing your speculation on one side, the absence of data, and then perhaps neighbors saying, hey, we are able to make calls.
Right.
So, there's an inconsistency there.
Yeah, and, and I mean, I think that the, the, one of the things that, that, you know, and this comes up a lot, you know, if, if you can go and you can make a call, well, if you can make a call, why isn't it good enough? And, I think, you know, the, AT&amp;T figures out the signal thresholds that, that they want to design their network to.
But, these meet those signal thresholds, you're just not sure where it's coming from. So...
Right, up here it does, yes.
Right, so, but I'm talking about that area. So, it, it's met the threshold, and there's a question about where it's coming from or whether or not you could boost the signal, and so, that's where I'm, that's what I'm addressing.
At eight-fifty, it does. I mean, if we look at, you know, at nineteen hundred, obviously, it's a different picture, as you've seen.
On a related note, speaking of boosting the signal, turning to the shipyard antenna as an old permanent location for eight-fifty for cellular. You've got some conflicting information as to exactly at what point on the smokestack the current AT&amp;T equipment is placed. Is it one-hundred-and-thirty feet or is it one-hundred-and-eighty-six feet?
Yeah, and I, that actually came in, in a letter that we got today. So, I went and I pulled out the information, and the information that I have is that AT&amp;T's actually at two heights on the smokestack. The, the initial installation, actually, well, the, the very initial installation was over two-hundred feet. The, it was moved down to one-hundred-and, one-hundred-and-eighty-six or one-hundred-and-eighty-seven feet.
One-eighty-six, I think.
And...
So, what is it today?
It's two-hundreds, that's what I'm saying.
Oh, okay.
It's probably the one-thirty and the one-eighty-six.
Right. The, because of...
I guess, just a further follow-on there, just a layman's question, would, would some cellular antennas pointed towards Downer Avenue at the higher elevation provide that coverage that you're lacking on Downer Avenue? Because from your tables, that second table here on page one, it looks like that's really the most significant increase... the most significant increase, I'm sorry, on Lincoln Street.
So-
Would that, would that provide similar, a similar increase in coverage?
Well, to clarify, everything we're showing you here is UMTS. And the UMTS antennas on the smokestack are at 186, 187 feet. The LTE antennas are at 130 feet, and that's what I was looking for. I actually have, I printed out today, the RF data sheet, which is a file that has, I know I brought it, I don't know what happened to it, the file that has all the parameters of the site, the hardware, the power levels, it's an internal AT&amp;T document, and it shows the height of the smokestack and where the antennas are placed, and that it shows that the LTE was placed at 130 feet, and the UMTS was, UMTS and GSM, I think UMTS was at 186 feet, and then GSM was at, actually, the center line was 187 feet, just because they're slightly different antenna types. So the reason for that is because LTE is even less frequency, less interference, robust in terms of interference. So the LTE couldn't be placed at the higher level without causing major problems. So when they did the LTE network design, they designed that site at 130 feet, which is why they came to apply for the lower antenna height, and that's where the LTE antennas are.
So there's really no option with additional antennas on the smokestack to sort of hit that coverage gap, particularly on Lincoln Street at 850?
The problem, I mean, theoretically, the antennas, the UMTS antennas physically could move up, could move back up where they were, 200 and whatever, 240 feet, I want to say, was where they, where all the antennas originally were. Well, not all the antennas, there weren't that many back then. And it would cover a portion of this. The problem then is that it's also, and the reason that that was lowered is because of the propagation across the water, it just couldn't be supported in the network anymore. And the, and so the, when UMTS came along, they had to be lowered.
What if it was just a single, a single, like a ray just pointed to the east and not across the?
You can't, and one of the problems with antennas is it's not, you can't, there's still, there's no such thing as a wall. You can't, you know, you can-
Isn't it straight, right?
It's a defined beam width, but it's not, you know, it's a 3 dB beam width or 5 dB beam width, it's not a, it's not something where it transmits and then it stops. So you'd still have propagation over the water, because even if you're pointing something here-
120 degrees, it would still go.
It's still, and, you know, they, the, when we, way back when, when we looked at 240 feet and settled on 180, the reasoning was, you know, there was some discussion of leaving the antennas pointed down to the south at the higher height, but the problem is that they're still going to create interference, the back lobes of the antennas are still going to create interference across the bay, and it just wasn't, it wasn't workable, it wasn't something that the network could support. So that's why, you know, in, I want to say it's 15 years ago now, the antennas moved from very high, 270 feet.
The tower is 186 feet, and so SAI pulled a building permit in 2011 to relocate equipment from 186 feet to 130, to locate the UMTS with the LTE at 130.
To my understanding, that's not-
Didn't happen?
Well, the LTE is at 130 feet.
Yeah.
The UMTS, to my understanding, is still at 186 feet.
Okay.
That's what all the records show.
And didn't act on the building permit?
I'm sorry?
And they just didn't follow through on the building permit?
I don't, I don't know about the building permit, I wasn't, I'm not a building guy.
It is probably something the board maybe wants to ask for an audit of some sort, so we have a better understanding of what's on the smokestack.
So, Joe asked a couple of questions, I'm not sure that I heard the answer. So when the antennas were initially built, how high was the antenna?
I believe they were over 200 feet.
Do we know what the-
I don't.
Approximately?
I don't recall. It was, I'm going off 15-year-old memory here.
So you think it was 200 and something?
200, so I believe it was, yeah.
Okay.
I can, how would we go back to that?
So at some point, it was probably over 200 feet?
I believe so.
Okay. And then you're saying 15 years ago, approximately, it was lowered?
Correct.
And it was lowered to what, to the 187?
186, 187.
Okay. And-
Primarily a network management issue?
And do we have the data that was, was any data submitted to support the lowering of the antenna, to this board or to any?
I wasn't involved in the permitting of any of that.
So, but the, so, but this isn't a personal question to you, it's to the applicant. Was any data submitted to support that, that you're aware of?
No, I'm aware of it.
Okay, okay. And then the next question I thought Joe was asking is, if we were at the 200-plus feet where it was initially sighted-
Or even the 186.
No, if the, because it's still at the 186. So if it was back up at the 200-plus feet where it was initially sighted, would there be, would AT&amp;T believe that there's a gap now, if it was sighted at that higher original location?
We didn't do that analysis because-
It's not there, I understand, right.
Well, and not with that for me to go back to the engineers, the performance engineers from this area and say, we've got to move the antennas back up after, you know, all the problems that they had before with the ballpark, I think it'd be shot.
Okay, so I understand, but if it was moved up there, you're not certain if there would, if that would address the gap, is what I'm hearing.
You still have the data.
That's right.
Okay. So now I want to get to why it was moved down. I've heard that there's no data, there's nothing that we can look at that would explain why it was moved down. You're telling me that you think it's, it was because of this interference across the water?
To why LTE needed to be at 130, or why is it 170?
Why the, is it the UMTS?
Yeah.
Why that, because that's, isn't that the gap area, you're not looking?
Correct.
There's no evidence of a gap here with respect to LTE, so we're only talking about the UMTS.
Correct.
And so for that, I'm trying to understand what the problem was that AT&amp;T identified that caused it to lower the antenna, because I'm hearing that if it was at the original height, there may or may not be, have been a gap.
Well, as, you know, and it's, and we're getting into, I think, some hard-to-explain network design things, but basically, if you go back to my-
And let me just, what I'm looking for is an answer as to what the problem was, not your speculation about what the problem might have been. So if you know what the problem was, I'd like to hear it, but I really don't want to hear speculation about seven options about what the problem might have been. We need to base our decision based on testimony about what actually are the facts on the ground. So do you know what the problem was?
I do, and in fact, I was involved in testing.
Okay, so please tell me that, okay.
I'm hesitant to tell you, because I can't produce the data. It's on some computer that I don't have anymore. But what we did was, back quite a long time ago, we keyed up a channel, and by keying up a channel, you can, you can, this was in the older network, TDMA, you can lock a channel on the air, and basically then it becomes a beacon, and then you can drive and collect information on that channel. So we, so we were concerned about interference across the bay, because we were having a lot of elevated drop calls on a lot of the sectors, both in the Logan Airport area, the sectors that were pointed to the south, and along the south shore here, the sectors that were pointed to the north and to the east. So we keyed channels that were probably, I want to say, a total of 10 sites, Hingham was one of them, there was a, there's a Weymouth Tower that's been around for quite a while, there are probably half a dozen sites here and half a dozen sites up there. We sent two drive teams, one went along, drove, you know, around the airport, through East Boston, Winthrop, Revere, that whole area there, in fact, a little further north into Malden. And we sent a team to drive basically from Route 3 North down here and measure those 10 beacons, to see the level of coverage that was coming from the site that you wanted it to come from, the local sites, and the level of interference that we're seeing from the faraway sites. Now, it wasn't actually interference, because they were beacons, so-
Help me to understand what that, why that's not actually interference?
Because they're not on the same channel. It's two discrete channels. So then what we can do is, we can take, we can say, okay, well, if they were the same channel, then what would be the problem? You know, what's the CDI? CDI was an important thing. Carrier interference ratio, that was an important thing in GSM. Now it's a little different, but we could, we could say, for example, the beacon from the sector of the smokestack that's pointed this way was, you know, maybe channel 192. The beacon from the site, the site in the neighborhood of Logan Airport, which is just off the airport grounds, that's pointed down this way is 186. Compare those two signal levels and tell me what the C to I ratio of each bin was measured, whether there would be an interference problem.
Right.
So we went through this analysis, and we determined that there was, in fact, because we, at that point, we'd ruled out, it's a beacon, we cleared those channels throughout the rest of the network, so we knew it had to come from where we had keyed it up and where it was transmitting. And we were able to make a good comparison, we were able to say that, yes, in fact, there was a big problem with interference across the bay, just as you'd find the same type of problem with interference from sites on the north shore of Long Island, across the Long Island Sound to Route 95, where you have a lot of usage right along the 95 corridor there, and also on the north shore of Long Island. Propagation across the water is a big problem. San Francisco Bay is another place where it's a big issue. So, so basically, we, by doing that, we were able to say, yes, there's a problem here that we have to do something about. We can't have these sites at these high heights propagating across the bay and causing interference here, because we'll never be able to solve that with local sites.
Now, that was about ballpark around 15 years ago?
Yeah, I want to say, yeah.
And from the limited amount that I've read, the technology has improved significantly over 15 years. Would that problem still exist today with the newer technology that AT&amp;T has?
It would, and it would manifest itself differently, you know, the technology has improved, so instead of being, we couldn't have, today, we'd have trouble doing that kind of test, actually, because they're not, the channels are, users are defined on channels now not by TDMA, not by FDMA, but by codes. So it's spread spectrum technology, so that the, that you can't key a channel, we wouldn't have the ability to do that anymore in a UMTS network.
Right, so how would you show the interference with today's technology?
Corrupted scrambling code. That's really the way we have to look at it. You know, is that, you drive around, when you do a drive test, your scrambling code is corrupted, and you don't know where it came from. It's kind of a hard, it is, as systems have evolved, it's become harder to manage faraway interference like this, because you can't get as direct a handle on it as we could before. It's, as systems evolved and sites have gotten smaller, it's less of a problem, because hopefully, the RF engineer who came before you managed the sites and managed to keep them within a confined area, and you don't have a lot of this. But sometimes it wasn't able to be taken care of.
But hasn't the technology also improved in terms of directing your signal to minimize and at least reduce that interference?
Somewhat, not really. I mean, they, they're using narrower beam width antennas, and they're, in LTE, there's, you know, beam pointing, direct, you know, specific beam antennas, but for UMTS, it's still an antenna that has a horizontal beam width that is fixed in terms of its, we call it azimuth orientation, but can be electrically down tilted. There's no, you can turn the antenna physically by sending a man up the tower, but there's no, there's no automatic beam moving this way in UMTS at this point.
But if you send the man up the tower and move it, doesn't that address the problem?
It could, it could. But that's, I think we're back to, you know, could we build a wall here and prevent the smokestack from propagating? If we were to put-
I didn't ask about a wall, I just asked about sending a guy up to turn it.
Could we turn, could we turn the antennas, and let me see what direction the antennas on the smokestack are pointed right now, let me tell you. I found this.
Oh, good.
Okay, so the, the UMTS antennas on the smokestack right now are pointed at 30 degrees true, which is generally about like that. 150 degrees true, which is generally about like that, right, and 270, which is due west. So I think, you know, the 150 probably is about like that, I'm just, could it be turned a little bit? Yes, but remember, you're still in the, in the horizontal beam width of the antenna, the antenna that's 150-degree antenna is- Katrine antenna, does it have beam width on here? I don't see beam width on here, but I think it's, I want to say it's at least 65 degrees horizontal beam width, so 35, 32 and a half degrees 3 dB point to the right and to the left of the direct orientation. So if it's, if you're at 150, you're within 3 dB at 115, which would, which would be basically directly there.
So is that a constraint of the existing technology that's there, or of all technology? You couldn't alter that by putting something different up there?
I'm not sure, I don't understand the question. Is it a different type of antenna?
Different type, yeah.
In other words, the antenna that's up there, when, how old is it?
The UMTS antenna is probably 10 years, maybe.
Okay, so if there was a newer tech, if that was replaced with a newer technology, would it have a different beam width that would narrow the problem for you?
The LTE antennas that are-
Not the LTE.
Well, that would be a newer technology, right?
But we're only, but since the gap is limited to the UMTS, is there a newer UMTS technology that would allow the beam to be directed more high, right?
But the, let me figure out how to answer this. The antennas aren't native to the technology. The antennas are, an antenna, you buy an antenna from a catalog, and an antenna has a list of specifications, but it will pass all technologies.
Okay.
And so there's no, there's no correlation between a UMTS antenna or an LTE antenna, other than the fact that maybe a UMTS antenna was put up 10 years ago, and whoever made it may be out of business now, or-
You said that the LTE antenna was a different height.
It is.
And so we're talking two different antennas?
Well, see, no, not necess, I'm talking two different physical antennas. We're talking two different actual pieces of plastic with metal, yes, we are. But the, you can use, there's nothing, the model of antenna that's being used for UMTS here is used for LTE elsewhere, not at this site. here is used for LTE elsewhere, not at this site, but in other places in the network. And the model of antenna that's used for LTE here is being used for UMTS elsewhere. Is that a better way to explain it?
What I heard is that the antenna that's being used for UMTS at this location is probably around 10 years old. What I asked is there anything newer that would address the problem or make the beam more narrow to avoid the interference or the scrambling that you're concerned with?
There are newer models of antennas, but they wouldn't, there are newer models of antennas-
I'm not dealing with the LTE because that's-
Right. No, there are physically newer models of antennas. These antennas are still in use, but, you know, not just here, but all of them. The antenna that is in use for UMTS is one of the most common antennas throughout the network. So could a different antenna be used-
For UMTS?
For UMTS, yes.
And would that-
That antenna would have some horizontal beam width. You could go into a catalog and you could pick out something with a 65 degree horizontal beam width or 90 degree.
Exactly, and so that would allow you to raise it because, from where it is now, because it would have less, create less of a problem than the problem you identified 15 years ago that caused you to lower it.
Somewhat, but you're still, I mean, it's not, I think it's not a direct black and white situation because you're still trying to point something essentially due east and you're asking the antenna to provide all of its, or basically all of its signal in a due east direction, but then transmit basically nothing to the northeast, which is, you're going to find, I think if we go through an antenna catalog, it would be very difficult to find something that's that directive, that's that specific.
That's interesting. Would it be difficult to find it or does it not exist?
You could probably find a microwave dish, you know, an eight-foot microwave dish that would have that kind of directivity.
And that would work for UMTS?
It could. I've not, I've never heard of anybody using a microwave dish for UMTS for the radio part. I've heard of them using it for the back hall part.
Sure.
There's also obviously a structural issue of putting an eight-foot microwave dish on the smokestack, which I don't know anything about, but I imagine it'd be a problem. But, you know, they, similar to, there are directive antennas, but even in a situation like the Ted Williams Tunnel where, you know, your service is very linear.
Yeah.
It's, you can't, there's nothing that can cover outside of that. The antennas that we put in there are, still have, they propagate to the side somewhat. I mean, they're very directive.
I understand that there'll be some propagation to the side, but I'm just wondering if it would be less of a propagation to the side than what was put up there 10-plus years ago that would then allow you to raise the height? That's the only point I'm trying to raise here. And either that's a possibility or it's not.
I can't definitively say that it is or it isn't.
Okay.
Because I, you know.
Okay, thank you.
Sure enough. Did you want to go on the third page? Are we good here?
Yes.
Yep. So the third page was basically just unrelated different points that had come up in various emails, letters, and verbal testimony that I felt like we needed to clarify, despite the fact that, I think, as you're going toward the main issue that we need to be here to discuss is, is there a hole? And can the site, does the site fill it? Are there other options to fill it? That's, as RF engineers, that's what we're here to do. But there's a lot of other stuff that Mr. Grave said that just doesn't make a lot of sense, so I wanted to clarify it. And I think I've already talked about B. A was just sort of a record-keeping thing. He continued to say that we had been somehow withholding a clutter map from him. We're in a hearing in Wauwahin that Earl was the attorney at, that AT&amp;T provided the same clutter map, but AT&amp;T didn't provide that clutter map. And we told him that, but he kept saying it. He also made the point verbally in the last hearing that we had been very confusing about the thresholds that we've been using. So I went back and I looked at the different plots that were done by my predecessors, and the only ones that were, in fact, could be confusing were the ones of the CW test that were generated based on the stuff that was done, the tests that were done around New Year's, and that's actually a different showing. And the idea was that those plots were put together to compare the CW test that was done to propagation for a simulation of a site to the exact parameters of the CW test, which is an omnidirectional antenna. You don't do a CW, you could, but ordinarily, we don't do CW tests with panel antennas because you need to free three frequencies in the network, which is difficult to do. And you also need to make sure that the antennas are aligned perfectly, which is not always able to be done with a crane installation. It's much easier to just do an Omni. So what we modeled was an Omni, so you can't really compare those plots to everything else that we've done, but it looked to me like we've been consistent all along, providing negative 74 and negative 82 as our thresholds. The other, the two lower thresholds that we've provided, I agree, are inconsistent, but they're kind of degrees of bad. So they're, in my book, you know, when I do plots for hearings, I tend not to even put those on because how do you explain how bad is bad? You know, it's not really a gray area. AT&amp;T has a threshold, and that's what they designed to, and that's what we, that's what we're here to try to meet. You know, so being close to that threshold is not really relevant.
So you're saying the standard for the CW test, that 70, minus 75 dB, then minus 85, minus 95, minus 105. Of those four thresholds, only the first, minus 75, would even be relevant to AT&amp;T? The others are-
Well, 85 is, of course, slightly close, right?
You just said, you just said, "close."
Close doesn't really cut it. We would look at that, what we would do with the CW data, if we were looking at it for analysis for the site, what we would do is we'd take the data, we'd adjust it so that the data corresponded to the actual future configuration of the site, so it's not an omnidirectional antenna. You overlay a pattern of directional antennas on it, and you overlay the proposed configuration of the site, and then you would look at it at the actual thresholds, because then you're comparing it as it would go into the network rather than as it was tested, which is slightly different.
Kind of, but then what's the, what's the purpose or the relevance of the CW test then? You're saying you would, basically you would ignore that test?
No, no. What we would do is, so you can, the CW test is basically going to provide you, you know the power that is transmitted, you know the antenna, and you know the received power on the ground. So from that, you can calculate a path loss from the site to the receiver.
Yeah.
Once you've calculated the path loss from the site to the receiver, then you can overlay what your transmitted power would be in that direction, in the eventual site, not in the CW site.
So it'd be a different level of transmission power?
It'd be a different transmitted power, which would lead to a different received power on the ground, but the path loss remains the same.
Oh, because you've tested that?
Okay. So that's, that's how we would get-
So that tests for loss, not-
It tests because your CW antenna doesn't necessarily exactly, or your CW antenna is a lower gain antenna. It's, because it's an Omni, it's, Omnis are typically lower gain. It's the power level, you know, the sectors may have different power level settings. You may have some downtilt you want to find. In this case, they would. And so if you're going to, yeah, you're basically, you're getting a loss figure. You're getting a loss method.
Okay.
And then from that, you can extrapolate your actual coverage. But what we were trying to show when we did this was, instead of going into that step, what we were trying to show was, okay, here's our test, and then under that, let's build, well, actually, this is a bad one because it's not one of the CW plots, but under that, let's build the coverage of the site, the CW transmitter, so we can see if the model is doing a good job of approximating the path loss values that were measured in the field.
Okay.
D, broadband antennas, we've kind of already talked about that. There was some discussion about, you know, we should just use a different type of antenna or less antennas. If we wanted to use broadband antennas, we would need to use less antennas, and, you know, it's, that doesn't really fly because all the antennas that AT&amp;T is proposing to use at this site, in addition, all the antennas that AT&amp;T is using on the smokestack and in the church are broadband antennas. They all, I put, I put the model of the antennas Andrew SBNH 1D 6565C. That's what would be proposed at the site, and those cover all the bands. And the reason that AT&amp;T needs to put multiple antennas is not so much that there are certain antennas, as we talked about before, that there are certain antennas that provide use to a particular band or are able to be used by a particular band. It's because the way the network is configured, one of the things that LTE and also somewhat UMTS, and in this case, the UMTS would do, the radio heads, the radio equipment for the site is not mounted at the ground, it's mounted up on the tower. And so it becomes the way, in a flagpole installation, which AT&amp;T has, and there's some, I think there may even be one hanging, I'm not sure, but in a flagpole installation, you can't place those radio heads at the top because they physically don't fit into the tube that's about this big. So they have to go at the bottom. When they have to go at the bottom, then you have to use coaxial cable to feed the signal up. And at the higher bands, the loss of that cable becomes significant, and the noise figure of that cable becomes significant. So from a network performance perspective, the goal is to have the radio heads as close as possible to the antennas for the, specifically for the high band. When I say high band, I mean the 17, 10, 21, 80, any one of the bands that would fit into that higher.
Which would be the LTE?
LTE.
Also UMTS. And in fact, GSM, although not on this site. But none of the bands are necessarily, again, like the antennas, the bands aren't really tied to the technology. Eventually, if you believe the forecasts, everyone will have an LTE phone, and UMTS will go away, and LTE will operate at 700, 850, 1900, and WCS, which is 2300. And the UMTS will no longer be needed, eventually.
Right.
When that happens, people guess. Maybe smarter people than me can figure that out. So it's not so much the broadbandedness of the antenna that's a limiting factor in terms of having to have multiple antennas, it's these radios. And in fact, Ericsson, who manufactures the equipment for these sites, has an antenna, it's not this one, but it has an integrated radio head within the antenna. To get, to push the radio head even closer to the antenna itself, reduce the cable loss completely, reduce the noise completely. And that's for the high band. For the low band, you still need to attach a separated radio head, because the cable loss, the jumper loss, is not significant at the higher, the lower band.
If we were not concerned, if you were not concerned at all with LTE, could you use the broadband antennas to reduce the number of antennas?
No, because we are using broadband antennas. There's nothing, that's what I was trying to go to at the beginning. There's nothing intrinsic to the antenna-
Yeah.
-that's preventing us from reducing the number of antennas. All the antennas will transmit and receive all the frequencies that we're licensed for. So that's not the limiting factor. The limiting factor is getting good service from the lower bands, from the 1900, which you can see is already limited, whether that's UTS or LTE. It doesn't, that's, it doesn't really matter. You want the, you want, in order to, that's the best way to say this, in order to aid the higher band signal, the 1900 megahertz signal, which is already penalized by the propagation that you can see, in order to aid that, you want to reduce cable loss by getting the radio, by reducing the coaxial cable loss and getting that radio head as close as possible to the antenna. And that's, that's the driving factor in having multiple antennas. That and the fact that, again, this is not LTE, but eventually, when LTE is launched, two parts, the way Ericsson has built the equipment, you cannot put radio heads for the two sections of the 700 megahertz spectrum onto the same antenna, because they'll interfere with each other. So those physically have to be two antennas, and they physically have to be separated by a minimum of six feet. And so eventually, what will happen with that is when everybody has an LTE phone and UMTS is being reduced, LTE is trying to be deployed in both bands, in both channels on the 700 band, a lot of these flagpoles will be capacity limited because that second LTE band at 700 will not be able to be launched. Or somebody will come up with a new solution that doesn't exist today. And then the last point, E, was in response to an email that GTP's attorney got earlier this week, where there was some question as to whether the plots that we showed last meeting were, in fact, inclusive of the church. And you may remember that the reason that we rushed to get them in before the last meeting was because we were waiting for the church. So they did include the church. That was, that's the whole, that was the whole point of waiting, was holding off, and in fact, we drove it two days before the previous meeting. So, and I can't tell you whether LTE is on the air to get there, but at this point, that's irrelevant somewhat, I guess.
But maybe now we have the answer on, back on the first page, on the second line of that third chart?
Sure.
So when we did the pre-drive with these sites and this site turned off, so it was covering up to this point, the Lincoln Street, and also my Greens Office over here. Now, when we turned this, and there was no coverage on Lincoln Street in this area.
Thanks, sir.
Thanks, sir. Right.
I'm sorry, over here.
Yeah, he's pointing to Lincoln.
Sure.
Yeah, he's pointing to one.
Yeah, now you got to turn it back, right? So, there we go. Thank you.
So the pre-drive test, when we did, the proposed site and the charge site was turned off, right? Now, when we did that, the Lincoln Street is over here, it was propagating up to this point and also part of this point. There was no continuous coverage. There was, there was no continuous coverage, but there was part of area dots that were covered, but there was no coverage over here, right? And the Lincoln Street stopped at this point, and I believe North Street starts from this point, point on. So, we didn't go all the way up to here, that's what I meant. I wasn't sure about this road, whether it was North Street or Central Street.
Yep.
So, now, when you turn this side on, you can see the coverage over here, from this point to this point, but there is no coverage over here. So, what we provided, the data table, was realistic. I mean, it should have a couple of dots that we saw in the pre-drive, we could have added that, but when we did this drive test, there was no coverage on that, so we didn't include that. So when we summed those two portions, like this portion and this portion, it came about the same.
I don't understand the answer. Did you?
Yeah, it would be better if we have the plot that I could show you. For the pre-drive, say it stops at here, right? Now, when we, and also, for the pre-drive, we could see the dots over here. There was some area where there was weak coverage, there was coverage at negative two. So what we did was, was we calculated all the way up to here, then we also took into consideration the areas that were, that we were having a coverage at negative two, and there was no coverage at this point, from here. So we summed up all those value-
Right.
-and it came out as point eight miles, I believe, yes.
Right.
Right. Now, when we did the drive test-
Right, so the First Baptist Church is now turned on?
Yes. Now, this is turned on. Now, what happened was, you can see the coverage that is being propagated by this side-
Right.
-all the way up to here, but there is no coverage over here.
But the-
Right?
It doesn't go up Lincoln Street.
It doesn't go up Lincoln Street all the way up to here, no. It stops right there.
Even though it's right there?
That's correct. That's realistic data from the drive test.
That's hard to believe, but-
Does that-
I mean, it may be the antenna array.
Does that make sense to you, that if the antenna is so close, it would have no, in fact, it just doesn't ring true?
What could cause-
It is a low. I mean, it is a low site, I know that. You know, you can see it actually, now this, if we go back to this, so, which is this side, you're showing, PCS?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, the difference needs to be in 850 versus 1900 coverage? Because there's clearly an impact, a benefit, at the cellular 850, and there's nothing at the 1900. So why, what is it about the 1900 coverage that would limit the ability of the church location to provide a signal? Do you understand what I've asked?
Yes.
And what you're asking, let me try to put a picture to what you're asking. Let's try to do that. So what you're saying is, how come this is bigger than this? Basically, right? Where this is what the church is covering-
So that's 850.
At 850. This is what the church is covering at 1900. Or is simulated.
Right, right.
You know, we can look at the-
When you say, I thought that we were talking drive, we're not-
Simulation, simulation, drive, drive. And, you know, I mean, we could look at the, maybe that's a better way to do it.
Okay, but no, let's stay with this one first and then-
Mixing apples.
Okay, okay, but let's stay with this until you get that up.
So the difference between this and this is, in one regard, the frequency. You know, theoretically, half the frequency is twice the distance. The signal loss will reduce twice as, let me try to say this the right way, signal loss will reduce twice as fast at twice the frequency. And half the frequency will reduce half as fast. That's in theory. These are somewhat theory-based, but they're also based on terrain and clutter and not on measurements that are done on this site. There's not, there's no actual performance measurement from this site being on the air that generates this. But you can see the difference in the theoretical coverage, same terrain database, just a different frequency, and different, probably not actually even physically, to use the correct words, it's probably not actually even physically a different antenna in terms of a different box, but the antennas, since they're broadband, have multiple ports on the bottom, some are made to pass high band, some are made to pass low band, or transmit high band, low band. So, it's probably actually physically the same antenna that would be providing both these coverages, but it's got a slightly different gain and beam width because of the different characteristics of that physical antenna at the different band-
So could-
Within the same box.
Right, so could the antenna at the church be reconfigured to deal with the higher bandwidth? So that, in fact, expand the green area on your second-
It wouldn't, what it would take to expand this, to be something like this, would be height. That would be the only thing that would do it.
So it's not the configuration that would be the height?
It's not limited by, a site like this would not be limited by, you can't, with the wireless network, you can't just turn up the power because, of course, you have the other direction to consider. So, if we were to raise the power above what's considered a balanced path condition, you can't, then you, you could get, you could make this bigger by raising the power, but by doing that, your mobile is still, or your user equipment-
Yep.
-is still fixed at a maximum power level for safety. And so that user equipment can't power up beyond that maximum limit. So when you do a path loss analysis, when you do, when you look at this, and you figure out what your maximum available transmitting power is for a site, it's based on the maximum path loss, or the worst-case path loss, uplink and downlink. If that, if I didn't lose you on that.
Can you show me where Lincoln Street is, unless it's hard from this distance to see which street that is? So-
I think it's this one, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, it is.
So, I mean, it seems to be going into the green here.
Lincoln Lane, right here.
Yeah.
Right about Abe Lincoln.
Right with the statues.
Okay. Got it.
So, so that's kind of the picture for the prediction, and then, if we, would you like me to put the measurement plots the same way and see if it's-
Go ahead.
I think I got them. 1900, 850. I think I had them the other way last time. Then you can see it's, you know, Lincoln Lane again, it's kind of fading out on the measurements as well. So what these measurements are, it's a van, it's an antenna on the roof, it's a cable to a measurement, survey, what's called a survey device. So it just measures, just cycles through the van, cycles through the van, makes a bunch of measurements, makes, very quickly takes measurements in those. These are actually the plots of multiple measurements together. So it's taking a fast cycle, recording signal levels. It's not, it's not a call. You can also do measurements with a phone, but that would be, of course, different because one of the things we have to be careful with, if you're using a phone, you're using it in a car, then you're adding the attenuation of the car, which is not, not good practice when you're trying to compare it to a prediction, because you've added another variable, which is the car, the direction of the car, the type of the car, you know, how big the guy driving the car was, so on. So, you try to, we want to sort of normalize everything to something that can be controlled, so we put the antenna on the roof to remove that variable loss from the car. You know, the other approach that is, that is important information, that is subscriber information, that is what people are doing, but that would be a different type of test. Just like you would test inside a building, you know.
Okay? Clear on that?
Yes.
A few of the questions I had, I guess, thank you, Emily, for your notes here. Please, yeah. No, I just had a few other items that I wanted to ask on, but-
Okay. Do we want to talk about this as well, or?
What's-
This is a letter that we received, I guess, today, July, from Kate Bradford Carr.
Yeah, we haven't had a chance to really go through this, so-
Go through your questions.
Not sure if it's here.
Yeah, okay. Why don't I just go through a few other things here?
Do you want to talk about it?
Well, yeah, let's, you want to talk about that first, you want to talk about the other, the other items in Emily's memo?
Well, whatever your-
On-site alternatives in particular. A couple of hearing sessions ago, months ago, we talked about the specific location of the tower, specifically as it relates to the fall zone, the variance. The fall zone, there's a residential property within the fall zone, the house is outside the fall zone, but the property itself is. And we talked at some point, I think this is a point that I made, is it possible to locate the tower further to the east on the property? Which would require it to be placed within the wetlands bylaw 50-foot, no disturb setback, but would remove that, as I looked at the plans, remove that fall zone from the residential property to the west. I don't think that's ever been looked at. And I should tell you, I'm having a little trouble with that variance in particular because it does involve a residential property. And I think there may be an alternative here that would, I mean, you'd still need the variance because there's still be, you know, still can't have the fall zone entirely within the subject property. But if we could get it out of the residential property, I, for one, would feel a whole lot more comfortable. And I'm not, I'm not sure that we've explored that option.
We do have a presentation available for that.
Okay.
We did submit to you a plan that shows all kinds of things.
Okay.
I apologize, I was interrupting.
No, no, it's fine.
I didn't know, since we're going with the RF, I did want to respond to-
Can we stay with the RF stuff before we go?
Sure, sure. Okay, so I guess, since that's specifically on the RF, and that does make sense, so why don't we do that?
In fairness, though, I didn't know, it makes more sense. I guess we thought that the neighborhood was going to present first, but in all fairness, Mr. Carr wanted to present his findings, then-
Before, but I wanted to, I had questions specifically on this RF issue before we go to others.
Okay, sorry.
In terms of the existing gap, you've given us sort of the in-vehicle area and the roadway. What about the population? How many people are affected? And how many residences are affected by the gap that you've identified, that you are claiming?
We can't calculate that. We can't, obviously, we can't calculate it based on the measured data, but we can calculate it based on the prediction. But we don't have it.
So do you have a number of how many homes or how many people are affected?
I don't have it in my pocket today, but we could have-
But there's nothing you've given us in the record. I haven't missed it, it's just hasn't been provided.
I don't believe it's been provided.
Okay. And you've, you've given us the maps that describe your issues of call reliability, where different, where the colors are turning. Do we have the actual data for those reliability tests? Have they, has the data been submitted, or are we just-
The measurements?
Correct, that, from which the maps have been generated.
We can certainly provide all the drive data, and we haven't provided it, it's a, it would be a very large file if they tend to be-
Well, I am not looking for raw numbers, I'm looking for summary tables. So, for example, when you did drive data, do we have data on the actual number of calls that were received on the drive? And the actual number of calls that were not received, and the number of calls that were dropped? Do we have that specific numbers?
Well, number, we're not, we're not testing calls.
There were calls, yeah.
So do we have data for any calls that were dropped?
No, the- We weren't collecting?
I understand you weren't, so, but in terms of my understanding of the record, do we have data for any calls that were dropped in the gap area?
We haven't provided that.
Okay, and do we know, I'm trying to figure out ratios, what the total number of calls would have been, the number that were not received, and then the drop, what I'm hearing is we don't have the data on that.
I have a table that I went through that I generated prior to the first hearing that I came to, that has all that information about the lost calls at the surrounding sites I had on my computer, I didn't provide it.
That hasn't, okay, so we don't have that.
Typically, AT&amp;T asks us not to provide that because it's not something they want to share, but I can certainly describe it if I open it up and explain it.
We're not, I'm not looking for a description, I'm looking for the actual data.
In the hearings that I've testified at, AT&amp;T does not want to disclose customer information about calls.
We have seen that in past cases.
And again, I'm not looking for customer names, I'm not looking for customer addresses, customer phone numbers.
Absolute numbers.
Correct.
I mean, I can certainly ask again if they would be willing to, it's not my policy, I ask if they would.
Right, okay.
My direction has been not really set.
Okay, and, again, if I'm looking for how many homes are affected by the gap, that number, I haven't seen.
That number, we can certainly-
Okay, but so far, it's not here. And in terms of the number of people, again, I haven't seen that number. In terms of us making some sort of understand, coming to an understanding of the significance of the gap, the reason I'm asking for the call data is to understand whether we're talking about, if people are experiencing a problem, is it a momentary interference, or are entire calls being dropped and unable to be made? There's two different qualitative levels here.
Sure.
Do we have anything in the record that will, would inform us on that?
In the record, no.
Okay. I think that's all I had on the RF stuff.
Okay. Sorry, I jumped on there. Any else?
So, do you want to go to Mr. Carr, or?
That's good. Okay. So why don't we do this, we'll go to Mr. Carr, if you can summarize your memo, then we'll allow the applicant an opportunity to respond and see where that takes us.
Yeah, so I think I was making three points there.
Before you begin, if you could introduce yourself for the record.
Yeah, sorry, Kate Bradford Carr, or I go by Brad typically, sent you a letter. My counterparts and I have been trying to figure out how to think about this. Three points I made in there, first one was we used a tool called Root Metrics, it looks like they've kind of figured that out. Difficult for us to find any kind of RF engineer sort of consulting, just for our neighborhood group, given our limited resources. This looked like a tool that, you know, might give us some more information, kind of independently. This looked like a tool that, you know, might give us some more information kind of independently. We noticed that AT&amp;T uses it in their marketing materials, I don't think they really, they use it as just marketing, right? So it's not engineering or scientific kind of thing, I don't think to them. But we procured a phone, AT&amp;T phone, did our own sort of drive tests, and noticed that we were getting pretty good signals. And according to this third-party site, it was, they have a rating system and this was the best rating you could get, both in terms of the voice as well as the data. And the voice, I think they were using, it's not clear how they got the math on the voice, the data they used as a download speed. And I had like a three gig plan, I burned through that, no time flat, right? So AT&amp;T made $138 off it. So my point there was it's not clear to somebody that doesn't have an engineering degree that there is a gap anywhere in there.
So where were you driving when you were, where were you physically when you were using the phone?
In a car, yeah.
But no, where, on what streets? Where were you located?
Just about all of these streets. I didn't-
So you were on Downer Street?
Downer, Lincoln and-
And Otis?
Oh yeah, all in here, all back up in here.
And Planters Field.
I can't say that I physically was on every single road. There was a very, 90% coverage in terms of being on pavement.
Okay.
And so that's, that was my point, really there. My second point, I was just referring to charts, which I guess don't have the same buckets or bins or whatever those things are called. But again, at least at the 800, I think, I forget, you're using acronyms now instead of numbers, but the 800 numbers didn't appear to me to be a gap in the drive data. And one of the letters I read, you know, they said, "Use the drive data, don't use the simulation or the computer-generated models." Didn't appear to be a gap there. And I think at the 1900 frequency, it didn't seem to solve the problem that I understood AT&amp;T was trying to solve. You know, if they're trying to get way up in there, that 1900 wasn't even anywhere close. You know, it proved a very small area right around the tower, but it didn't really fix, I thought, what they were trying to fix. So that was my second point in there. My third point was, like Emily mentioned about the smokestack, just driving by, there seems to be a lot of space at the top of that smokestack. We noticed that there was a, something happened in, I think it was 2011, to put something at 130-ish?
Right.
Feet. And just curious whether, to your line of questioning, whether it was anything we could do over there that would solve the problem that they're trying to solve. And I guess, if I could just put a fourth thing in here that's not in there, I just heard that it's possible to put towers pretty close together to 300 feet. You know, I wonder if there's another site, even in the shipyard maybe, that a tower could go, you know, over that direction. I know they're building that out, but between the condos and the nursing home that sits back there, it's pretty empty land back there. I don't know who owns it, what it's for. I think when we looked at the alternate site analysis, some of them were thrown out because they were too close to the tower. But that doesn't appear to be a limiting factor anymore. So, you know, as a neighborhood group, we're trying to figure out, how do you solve the problem? And we just don't have good information at all these hearings on, really even what we're looking for. So it's been a little frustrating in that regard, I guess.
So you're suggesting somewhere over by the Welch, the nursing home and at the end, Conditto Road?
Well, see, if you go to the nursing home, behind the nursing home, there's an old paved road that's not used anymore. And that goes all the way out, comes out in the shipyard.
Right.
So I'm wondering if somewhere along there, even on the shipyard side, I don't know if, how high you can go and gain and all of that stuff, right? But maybe there's something that would solve the problem.
There's called 100 people who live over there now, you know.
Solve the capacity problem as well.
Hundreds of people. We have great service over there, including us.
You guys live there?
Yes.
Just a thought though, right? There might be an alternate site that was thrown out because of its proximity to the smokestack that isn't, you know, isn't a problem really.
So, just so I'm clear, when you were driving in the area that AT&amp;T believes is a gap, did you have problems making calls?
So, the tool you use is testing the signal strength, I believe. I wasn't actually making a call.
Okay.
I did make calls, I never had a problem making calls, but I didn't record the calls. I didn't do the more scientific kind of analysis. Didn't have a problem with the calls that I did make.
So when you, or have you made calls in this gap area, I'll call it?
I would say on Downer, yeah.
On Downer Street and-
Downer Primark.
Have you had problems making those calls?
No.
And have you had calls dropped?
No.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Carr. The applicant like to respond, I guess?
So, it's a good report, by the way. It was actually, I found this site I had been to before, Root Metrics, it looked pretty neat. And the one thing that I noticed, the first thing I clicked on the Boston analysis was that they rated AT&amp;T the best carrier in Boston, which-
Congratulations.
I hadn't seen that before. But anyway, so we, when I went into the analysis that he was referring to, the plots that you can get out of it, out of the analysis are, just basically show this green color and says that's good. But I, as an engineer, I didn't really know what that meant. So you can actually click on it, each hex. And if you click on the hex, it tells you how many measurements they took in each one of the hexes and what the average signal strength was in that hex. Now, there's a couple of things that they did that, or that weren't clear to me exactly how the measurements were taken. One, it looked like they took them with a phone. So with a phone, there's no way to isolate it on any particular band, it's just a customer experience. So it's on, if it's got 850, it's on 850, if it's got LTE, it's on LTE, depending on what the terminal type is. If they're making a voice call, it's going to be on UTS. I imagine someplace it might end up on GSM too, but-
Was there any way to distinguish if it was data or phone?
There's a data analysis as well, there's a voice analysis and a data analysis. We can go on their website.
Okay, but we're talking voice, so it couldn't be LTE?
It couldn't be LTE.
Okay, so we do know it's not LTE?
Right. But it could be GSM, it could be UTS, it could be 850, it could be 1900. That's as a subscriber and as someone testing the subscriber perspective, that's transparent to you, or should be transparent to you. And it looked like they tested this area in September 30th of last year to October 7th of last year, just for information. And then I clicked on all these, I don't know if-
Did you read the call?
No, this is, I don't know what, I don't really know their methodology, but when I clicked on the bin, the hex, what I, what I got, and so what I did was I just wrote down, there didn't seem to be any way to plot it, plot the information out in a way that I could print, so you have my messy handwriting there. The number at the top is the average signal strength that they reported, and the number at the bottom is the number of measurements that were reported in that bin. And that comes as sort of a pop-up on the screen when you click on each one of these hexes. And then the ones that I circled are the hexes where the average signal strength is below the AT&amp;T threshold. So I'm not really sure what their bad, poor, fair, good refer to. And, you know, but based on the thresholds that AT&amp;T is using to design their network, you can see that there's quite a bit of the area that's shown to be below neg 82, which is the threshold that we presented.
So the ones circled are the ones where, are the ones that are below the neg?
The average signal strength is below neg 82, yeah. And I didn't circle neg 82. I just wanted it below because-
So even though they're, even though they're green, they're not good?
That would be my, you know, that, Root Metrics may feel they're good and I guess AT&amp;T's perspective would be, that's great, but that wouldn't be what, as a network engineer, we would consider good.
I think these numbers also are, I don't believe are corrected for the entire piece. Was there, I think, trying to correct with one of those names? I forget which one. So I don't know what the factor would be, you have to change those by any-
Yeah, and again, I mean, if these were actually all measurements, my understanding is what this is, is if you, I don't know how these measurements were taken, honestly. I can't. I mean, if they had a standard mobile and it was in the car, then what you're saying is correct, that it would be a different, you'd want to normalize it to something different because you've incorporated the car loss where we haven't incorporated it on here.
So the people that did this testing are probably in the room directly, or were just driving around in the car. We don't have the background to know.
I may be wrong, I don't, I don't really, I tried to go through their website and understand exactly what they were doing, but it seemed like they were doing two separate things. They were, number one, they were getting subscribers to, you could like mark up what, you know, I'm here and here's where my measurement is. And then they also sent a team out to collect data. And I, and I'm not, I wasn't, I couldn't find from-
I populated them.
I'm sorry, could you identify yours? Yep.
Joan Nevins, Nine Teplo Drive. This area of the map was completely white. And myself and another neighbor populated these dots. We were driving with, in our car. At the time, we weren't familiar with the car attenuation issue, so we were populating it, you know, within our car. You mentioned that there's an 8 dBm loss attenuation within your car, so you would have to adjust all those numbers by 8 dBm.
So then we'd be looking for values only over 90 on this?
If you would, I've never seen this, if you took the 90, you would subtract eight and you would get 82.
Which is their performance standard, right?
The other thing that I guess I don't, I didn't really, wasn't clear to me as well was, is this, are these measurements, I know that-
They do a root score report, which they do in certain markets.
Right.
They call it root score.
Yeah.
And then they have this user app where users can populate in their area. So this particular area was totally white, nobody had populated it before. I'm not sure where you got the dates that you were referring to, but this area had not been populated prior to us populating it.
Right. So of all of these, whatever you call them, hexes, there are only three that, there are only three of all of these that you circled that are above minus 90. There's a minus 95, a minus 93-
Minus 92.
And minus 92. Everything else, if you were adjusted for 8 dBm attenuation or whatever it is, so of all of those, you would have, every, all but three of those hexagons would meet the performance standard.
Right. But the other thing I'm not, I wasn't clear on when I looked at it, is whether, when you, when you're going through and you make a point, whether they're taking, because your mobile is measuring the downlink signal strength, which is what we're plotting, but the site is also measuring the uplink signal strength. They could have, you could, this could be either of those. If, you know, if it's the uplink signal strength, it doesn't match at all with what we're looking at here, because this is strictly downlink. So I don't, I wasn't able to figure that out, whether, what measurement they were taking.
For those of us who aren't radio frequency engineers, what's the distinction between uplink and downlink that's important here?
Just the delay budget is different. Your, your, uplink, your mobile, your phone is limited to six tenths of a watt. And then you have the path loss. And then at the site, it receives it and the signal that the site receives, the sites have better receive sensitivity than the mobile unit that you have in your hand. So even though path loss is the same between the two points, the link budget is different because the site is able to receive and decode, for lack of a better term, a lower signal than the mobile. So if we turn these analyses around and look at them from the uplink perspective, first of all, I'm not really sure there's a way to do that separately. But you could also, the signal level received in the site could be lower than the signal level received in-
So the signal level at the site would be better than the, and this could be, and you're saying that these charts could be reflecting that better signal strength as opposed to the downlink, which is what the user experience gets on their phone?
And it also, I mean, typically as mobiles run around in coverage areas, they're not operating at full power. So your uplink analysis and looking at uplink measurements can be difficult because it becomes a self-solving problem because you're, you're trying to, it's a window of signal that you want that mobile in. As the mobile gets weaker and weaker, it powers up to get back into that window. As it gets stronger, if it goes out of that window, the mobile is sent a message to reduce its power to get back into that window. And so, the sites actually also are doing that, but when we plot sites, we plot what's called a pilot, which doesn't do that. So it's not, without knowing that it's, that it's downlink, I don't, I-
So are you more concerned with what the phone is seeing or what the tower is seeing?
Well, you need both in order to make a, in order to make a useful-
You said one was weaker than the other in general, right?
When we, when we do analysis on-
The phone is the same.
I'm sure Brian's been up and talking here.
Hey, yeah, please.
When we do analysis on sites, the analysis we do, the drive test data is all based on the signal, the downlink signal that's received on the ground. There's no, you can, you can collect information on a user, on a subscriber, and have them drive around and look at what the sites are measuring that user at. But that's something different and is subject to a lot more power control of the phone. Because in order to preserve your battery, keep the power a little bit on the phone, the phones typically are always running at full power.
It was really wonderful, sorry, I guess. The down?
It's not really, without, you can't have one without the other, really. It's not, because, it's not a question of which is more useful to us, we need both, right? In order to make a call, you need to be able to hear the person you're talking to and they need to be able to hear you.
So normally you grab a call, it's not because the downlink was weak or because the uplink, it could be either?
It could be either. It could be either, it could also be more often than not, what it is is interference, that something else has affected either the downlink or-
But these are all downlink maps?
Right, because we're driving around. This is, you know, a truck, a van that's running around.
Yes, but we did the cars, right?
So is this a downlink map too?
That's what I'm saying, I don't know. I couldn't, from their website, I couldn't figure that out.
But we should be able to get an answer to that.
I think it is, I don't know how the phone knows what the tower's saying.
Yeah. So it seems that this, that both of these are downlink?
You can see the DBs and-
Yeah.
That's what the other one said.
Yeah, I mean, I spent, you know, we got this today, I spent a couple hours looking at it, I couldn't, from the, you know, and I couldn't even figure out, obviously I was mistaken, that I thought these were values that, because they do do their own survey drive, where they send, like I said, send people out to drive around. And I thought these, the website is a little difficult to figure exactly what's going on.
I'm wondering what questions you have, because we have corresponded with people that have done this. So this uplink, downlink question here?
Yeah, I mean, well, uplink, downlink for sure. And then the other thing was, I noticed it said, there was a link that said, "Click here to see the type of mobiles that were used." And I clicked there and I couldn't find the information about what-
What type of mobiles or devices?
Not yours that did this, because I thought that I was looking at the drive test that they did. I wanted to know what kind of use, what kind of devices they used to test the network.
They do have that information in the methodology tab on the website?
I couldn't find it. It said, it said- I couldn't find it, because it said, it said for each, for your market, click here to see what the-
And that gives you the root score?
Yeah, I got there.
Yeah, if you go to a tab that has methodology, they get into, I believe actually, it might be one of their blog.
Yeah, I didn't, I couldn't find it.
But the thing in testing area, we did.
Right, yeah. Well, that's clear to me now.
The AT&amp;T uses root metrics to validate, in fact, they're using it in a lot of their marketing campaigns to validate their, you know, now number one. And so AT&amp;T uses it as a validation of their service. So we used their app to validate the service in this area and it came back matching with, you know, what root metrics claims is number one service.
I mean, I can't, I, I don't know where to go further with this because I-
Right. Understood.
You know.
Are you finding anything, Mr. Fisher?
It seems pretty, I'm, I'm reading the methodology and it seems to do exactly what we're looking for. It tests the mobile network performance from the consumer's point of view. And it provides assessments of performance and they're going through the methodology, it seems-
Seems down, like a downlink.
Yeah. So it does seem like the right way to go. So, yeah.
So the conclusions of this root metrics are basically being endorsed by AT&amp;T, right?
At least in their marketing campaign to be number one.
Which, which as we've learned in the past, doesn't necessarily match what the significant gap of coverage metrics are.
I'm not aware of that discussion with respect to root metrics.
Oh, right, with-
Yeah, correct.
With respect to that.
Yes.
But I'm, I was talking about marketing maps in particular.
No, but I'm talking about-
In general.
Yeah, but this is a site, this is actually a testing site-
Yes, correct.
That AT&amp;T is endorsing publicly.
And they say their performance is measured indoors and outdoors at the same location. The drive testing takes place during travel between these randomly selected indoor locations. They're, that, done over time. By the time they've tested, we finished testing a metro area, we have a statistically valid spatio-temporal view of network performance across the entire area. So, I mean, I think it's, it seems to make a case for providing valid data.
Right.
Okay. I think we need to give the neighbors a chance to do their presentation before they-
Right, yeah, I was gonna say, I mean, there's a few, few more points that I wanted to talk about, but at this point, I'd like to ask the neighbors if they have any particular comments or concerns. I know you had a request to do the presentation, I know we've got some additional issues that were presented here, but-
I might pause upon the board if we're not staying there.
I'm sorry, yeah. Just need to identify-
My name is Tony Viola, I'm at Eight Two Teplo Drive. I may impose upon the board to take a short break perhaps, so that maybe we can set up a visual presentation. We expect that we may eat up about an hour and a half's worth of time, and if you'd prefer, and we would certainly prefer, given some new data that's been submitted this evening for us to take maybe a break in terms of presenting it in the next meeting, if at all possible. There are a lot of slides that we would show tonight that seem to be redundant. Quite frankly, you've taken the wind out of a lot of our sails. And there's some information that's new, that's been presented tonight, that we'd like to redress perhaps in a future meeting. Although if you, if you, if you'd like to go tonight, we would be happy to do so. But we do need some time. Just in, in the spirit of time, I know we have, or you, you have been given a copy of a letter that some of the neighbors had addressed to the school department.
Yeah.
Dr. Gallo received a letter, and Mr. Ferris, who was the business administrator for the school department, and we sent letters to each and every member of the school committee in light of the findings at last, at the last hearing, when we discovered there was some information that was never in writing perhaps, sent by KJ, KJK or KJS Wireless to the, to the school department. We understand there were verbal communications made with, with Mr. Ferris or maybe his predecessor, but nothing in writing, and we decided to step in and perhaps do so. We have two representatives tonight from the school department, we have Chairman Estes, as well as Dr. Schreier from the school committee, who's a member, and perhaps we could give them an opportunity to take a couple minutes of your time to discuss the prospect of considering a presentation or a proposal from Global or from AT&amp;T for that matter. Is that something?
That was one of the issues that we talked about last hearing, was the possibility of the school and all that, so I think that would be time.
I'm fine with that.
An hour and a half presentation at this time of night, I think that's, Tony-
I, I would actually prefer maybe at the next hearing, they might lead off with that, but since it sounds like they're requesting a little time to digest information at this hearing, and if it's, they need a break and then an hour and a half, we're gonna, they're gonna push, push us out past 11:00 and we started at 7:00.
Let me ask counsel what, what your schedule is and what your bedtime is.
I don't have one.
Like me last week.
Not, not the right answer, counsel. I'll be overruled. You know, I, I guess that, you know, we are hoping that this process is nearing an end.
It's our wake.
We believe-
We share that hope.
We believe that we have, you know, submitted, you know, a significant amount of information. I have not stood before you and jumped up and down and waved my arms and talked about the telecommunications act of 1996, including, you know, case after case with regards to what is a gap, how is a gap significant, and what must we demonstrate or what does the court say? I mean, I would caution this board to make sure that you look at that, because certainly, I mean, simply without taking all that time, I think that we have more than met, you know, that threshold. Do we want to be respectful to the neighborhood and to this board? Yes. Would we agree to continue and extend yet again, this process has gone for a long time, sung to our-
Right.
Ability, our ability to get things to you in a timely manner, recognized and appreciated? You know, we would, with all that being said, we would, we would agree to continue one more hearing.
Yeah, I think that's what I had in mind.
Perhaps even before, we need some sort of an agenda, figure out what it is we need to do and, you know, be done with this.
Absolutely. Yeah, I'm, I-
And I want to get, I mean, I want, I want to give the opportunity, and I know we started off because there were some new information submitted.
Bye.
I agree, we're totally prepared tonight, I think all is to, for an hour and a half.
Well, one issue is, are we prepared in terms of any kind of additional testimony or analyses from our peer review RF engineer? I mean, can we wrap it up in one hearing, one more hearing? Because I don't want to commit to something and then say, oh, we, so I just, I hear what you're saying, I'm just, I just wonder if my, we're, we only have one more hearing of kind of discussion deliberation, I, I don't-
Well, there's two issues. One is, can we wrap up the public hearing at the next session? And I think we can. If we lay some ground rules, namely, any information that's going to be submitted, we get it at least a week before so that you've got a chance to see what they're presenting or they've got a chance, so, so we're not getting last minute things. With respect to tonight's hearing, I know you submitted stuff within 24, 48 hours of the hearing, which was against our request, which is, again, we had asked it, asked for it ahead of time. And I respect that you've got a lot of things going on, and I think if we were going to try to wrap it up tonight, we might not include the material that you submitted this evening only because we haven't had a chance to fully digest it. And we want to give the applicant the courtesy of making sure that everything that you want is in the record. So I think it's in both sides' interests that we do that. The second point, Todd, that you raised is sort of reaching a decision. Once, we can close the public hearing and then we can schedule other hearings for deliber, for deliberation, which would not involve any input, you, people could certainly be here, but there'd be no input from anyone. And so closing it the next hearing wouldn't preclude us from having subsequent hearings to deliberate.
But would it, would it preclude us from having our radio frequency engineer back for any subsequent discussion, testimony, response? That's what I'm worried about.
Yeah, I mean, the answer's yes, it would.
So that, I, I was concerned that, that if for some reason we schedule the next hearing, but we can't get, you know, our, you know, peer review engineer who might provide, you know, technical assistance to the board at that hearing, then we basically have an incomplete report or analysis by our expert, which I don't know is helpful.
Right. So that tells me that when we reschedule, when we schedule the next hearing, we gotta make sure that-
Yes.
Our RF engineer can be here, or else the iterations will keep going and your frustration will just mount. So I think we should commit to one more hearing at a date, I don't know if we can agree to that date yet, since we don't know our RF engineer's schedule.
You have to agree to the date-
I know.
And we'll make sure that-
Right, and then we can, right, we can make sure that it's the last hearing, whenever, if we need to move it, right, right. So-
And I think from a RF perspective, and-
Yeah.
I, I think that we are potentially, we may be able to get you some of that additional information. Is it required? You know, when legal hat on, it's, I don't think it's required.
I mean, my, my guidance is, whatever you think is legally required, and we're not going to require more than what's legally required. So, and you're the lawyer for them, so you'll certainly make the right judgment.
That's a little easy.
Yes.
So, yeah, so we, I think that would be it for us from an RF perspective. If Mr. Grape wants to come in and provide any sort of summary, I mean, we too would ask that, you know, he try, try to provide that in writing so that-
Absolutely.
The other bond.
Fair, fair enough.
I would like to give the school representatives an opportunity-
I would too, yes, I would too, I would too.
You know, with regards to the additional information, just as a matter of housekeeping, we had submitted, Jesse Marino, you know, the project engineer submitted, I think you have it, sort of the site plan-
Yes.
Of the two different locations. Jesse's prepared to talk about, you know, whether those are feasible or not. I think we have Jesse, the property owner here, who is, you know, able to chat about that.
Yeah.
I think there was some, there was a request with regards to the site acquisition consultants. You know, what we did is, as opposed to just submitting that table, and we put that in an affidavit format for them to sign, we submitted that. I don't think there was any-
Well, at the last hearing, as it ended, I asked two questions, and I had gotten tentative answers, and the two questions were whether or not the proposed location could be moved from the residential portion of the site to the commercial portion of the site, or would that move be impossible because of the topography of the site, or would that move mean that the tower would no longer address the gap that you believe is there?
And we are prepared to present that.
And so that, that was just moving it from the residential to the commercial portion. And I, what I heard at last meeting was, you could, you probably could move it and it would not impair the ability to address the gap, and there was nothing about the topography, topography of the site, but you, some, I think you wanted to think about that. And so, so that hopefully is a rather short question and a short answer, because I, again, I, we need to make sure we have other people.
I, I think that Jesse can address that in, you know, less than 10 minutes. We, we too would need the protector.
I think it'd be easier to see, but I do have some copies for the board, and I have a black and white version, it'd be hard to see, but I can do my best to explain.
Maybe if we do take that quick break, we present that and then-
Sure, but just so, I, I can't imagine it would take 10 minutes to answer the question about moving the tower from one location on the site to a different location. That's my specific question, whether or not that would impair the ability to address the gap and whether or not there's something about the topography of the site that would prevent you from doing it.
Earl, Steve Keller, well, I think that's on mic real quick to say, if we move the tower 50 feet theoretically, but Jesse isn't coming through on an environmental side. So it's, it's-
I'm not-
It's more, but it's more you for us than just to say, yeah, we can stick it over here, we have environmental concerns of that nature.
We, we have the map prepared, I mean, I can answer that quickly. We are not able to move the, the tower. You know, we're prohibited from moving that tower for a couple reasons. Number one, we cannot get landlord approval to-
Right, and I, my question was, assuming that the land, that landlord approval was not an issue, I understand that landlord can, is, is restricting you, but putting that aside, my specific question is the topography? Is there something about the topography of the site that would prevent you from moving it and whether's moving that, however many feet would mean that it would no longer address what you perceive as the gap?
So I listened to what you said last time, created this little map here to try to show you. Just real quick to explain, hopefully you guys can get it there, in green here, if you see that green hatching, those are areas of the site that are, that are steep. So from the pure topography standpoint, if we were going to limit it to that, there aren't too many locations that, that aren't feasible on the site. But when I looked at this, that was far too simplistic of a way to look at it. So what we did was looked at, well, number one, could we site it on that side and meet the setbacks?
That wasn't, by the way, that's not my question. I wasn't asking about setbacks, because you don't meet setbacks in your new location. My only question was, is there something about the topography of the site that would prevent you from moving it? In other words, it was too hilly?
No, not, not purely topography.
And I'm asking purely topography, and then if you moved it, would there be a reason that you could no longer address what you perceive as the gap if you moved it from where it is over to another portion of the site?
Purely based on topography, the difference between the location we're at in the back and the front was between one and three feet.
Yeah.
Okay, but to be honest, that's a-
And I'm saying you could do that.
You could do that, but there's a million other reasons why.
Agreed, but I, I was only interested in two, the topography and whether or not it would affect your ability to address the gap.
Right. Purely based on topography, I could not limit the front-
Okay.
But there's a million other reasons.
Agreed, and if you moved it there, would, would you still be able to address what you perceive as the gap in coverage?
Yeah, we, I had emailed correspondence and-
Right.
Based on a couple of feet, no. But that's only a part of the issue, so-
But those are the only two questions, you can certainly go beyond that, but I only asked those two questions.
Right, fine.
I didn't take 10 minutes, which was good.
But there are other reasons why I couldn't go there. Do you want to, are you interested in those or not?
When we say go there, what do you mean?
I'm saying in the front, it was, or any part of the property. So on there, there's some hatching of, we have to look at a bunch of areas of, you know, current egress, we gotta look at the-
Yeah.
Just the building setbacks, not just the tower setbacks. There's current parking loading, there's also a former gas station in the area as well, that used to have, you know, buried tanks and debris, so all of those things come into play. And there's also current buried utilities there, not to mention, you know, loss of parking, these other, and, and really affecting the primary use of the property as a shopping district. So for those reasons, you know, snow storage, pedestrian vehicle traffic, there's a whole litany of reasons why, you know, citing it in the front, in the middle of where people park and where there's stores, in our opinion is not appropriate.
Right, and number one on your list is the landlord won't let you do it. And I, I'm granting all that, I was just asking whether the topography or whether your ability to address your, the gap were two reasons, and what I heard is the answer is no.
Purely based on topography, correct.
Yep, perfect, that's all I needed.
Well, how do we want to proceed? I think, you know, a 90-minute presentation, I think, is a little bit out of-
I'd love to hear from the school department.
Yeah, well, yeah, we want to hear from-
Yeah, we want to hear from the school department.
I don't think we need to take a break to do that.
No, I don't think we do. Let's keep going. Yeah, why don't we just keep going? So, who's here from the school department, and what do we want to talk, want to come up? First off, thanks for coming.
Sure, thanks.
Brent, I'm so sorry.
I'm going to send my bill to somebody, I don't know who.
Do you mind sitting for your presentation? We're being asked by H-CAM to have you join us at the table.
I was looking forward to standing for a minute, but that's okay. That's all right. Good evening. Ray Estes, 92 Fort Hill Street, chairman of the school committee. Here with Dr. Ed Schreier, a member of the school committee as well, secretary of the school committee. We received a letter from three residents a couple days ago. I believe all the school committee members have received it. I don't know if they've all read it. We haven't discussed it yet. Our next meeting is June 16th, next Monday. I believe that I will include on the agenda some mention of this, whether in communications or a formal agenda item, just to kind of throw the issue out as, do we want to even consider taking this up at some future point, the possible sighting of a cell tower on school property, and what would that involve? Obviously, after sitting through tonight's presentation, only a mere portion of what you've already been through, it would seem to involve quite a bit. I don't know much about this. I've learned a little bit tonight, kind of interesting. I knew a lot about sound before tonight, now I know a little bit about this. I don't know what my other members feel about this. Again, we haven't discussed it. I don't know even if the site of Foster School would be an appropriate site. I don't know the details about wetlands on the site. Obviously, there's some concern with the instant site about wetland buffer and where something could be located. Might run into the same situation at Foster. I don't know the answer to that. I'm sure there are some wetlands there. I don't know where the delineation is. And I don't know if, what would be involved in working out some kind of license arrangement that I would expect would be the case.
But you do know there was money going from the applicant to the schools?
Yeah, I'm aware that there would be some financial arrangement involved. Presumably, the landlord of that property would be receiving some payment from AT&amp;T, so whoever else would seek to cite it there would receive that as well, so. I figured it was worth coming tonight. We received a letter from residents. They elect me, I'm, they're my constituents, so I thought, okay, I'll come, I'll listen, see what folks have to say, what's involved. Nothing to promise, obviously, but we will mention it next Monday evening. I don't believe we'll be discussing it in detail, because we do have a full agenda otherwise, and we'll be meeting once in July and once in August unless something special comes up. So I don't anticipate taking this up in depth anytime in the near future. It does seem like, based on tonight, that you've kind of brought it to a point where you're going to be ready to make some sort of decision, one way or the other, in the near term, so I don't know how our involvement may or may not impact that.
Has the school board considered this option before for Foster School?
You know, I don't know the answer to that.
Or from this particular application, within the last year?
No.
Okay.
We've not been approached. In fact, we've received no correspondence or contact from the applicant with regard to the potential for citing this at Foster School whatsoever. I do understand from reading at least the letter, a representation of what has been said in prior hearings, that someone mentioned Foster School as a potential alternative site. I have no specific knowledge of that, and certainly no one's contacted us about it, other than the neighbors.
Thank you.
That's all I had to say, unless there are any questions.
No, that's very helpful, thanks.
Great, thank you.
So, there's a couple more items on Emily's list that won't take long, but after that, it sounds like we've got another hearing anyway. It sounds like the residents will prefer to present their 90-minute presentation at that point.
They may be able to take a little bit off that, too.
60 would be great. Take however long, take however long you need.
Is there any, I'm just wondering if there's anything that they want to present now? Not, would you rather just hold off and just do...
Make your best to do it.
Okay.
Just as an attempt.
For our time, that's great.
One comment on the school committee, how do I get on a board that only meets once a month in July?
You get elected.
I'll trade you my vote for yours.
And we used to get three bucks a hearing, but we don't anymore, so, after many years ago.
Well, I think if we're going to, it sounds like we'll continue, we'll have a presentation by the butters. We do need to pick a date where we can have our radio frequency engineer or our peer review engineer here, so that we think we can close the public portion. That's our goal, right?
Yeah, and make sure it accommodates your schedule as well.
Right. And Emily, how do you suggest we do that, or...
I think we'll just pick a date and then see that he's available. If he's not, I'll work with the applicant to continue that to a future date.
Okay.
Very good, looks like.
But our goal is to make this the last.
Yeah, the goal is to have one more public hearing, that's our goal.
But I also think...
It's looking like August, to be honest with you guys.
But a requirement needs to be that we get the material in advance.
Yeah.
Because there's no reason that the applicant should come here and say, oh, we're seeing it now for the first time, and now they want to look. I mean, I don't want to put you in that position. So what are we talking about?
I mean, I'm looking at the list of upcoming meetings. We've already got three, well, two scheduled in July. I mean, June is full. About the 7th and 28th.
You're away for the middle of July, so this...
Yeah, I'm away from the 10th to the 20th.
I mean, the 28th says potential, so I guess it's not...
That should be confirmed up, and that's a joint hearing with the planning board on...
It's a potential joint meeting, and it's definitely a meeting for us.
Anything during the week of the 20th?
Nope.
You want to shoot that?
Instead of 7/16?
Instead of, sure.
Instead of July 16?
Yeah, would you, would you be around?
I'm just trying to avoid, you know, like, three, three weeks of meetings in July.
Well, that's what we'll have, yeah. We'll have that.
I just can't do it from the 10th to the 20th.
What month are we talking about?
July.
July, how about that? Already got one on the 28th. Wednesday, the 23rd?
Works for me.
Back to Wednesdays, but that's July, so you shouldn't be teaching, right?
It does, we're talking about the 23rd of July, do you know what your schedule is?
I'm looking at mine right now.
I should be all right.
No vacation with the kids?
Yes, but not that.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
I would, I think that you did make a good suggestion about with regards to the middle.
Yeah.
We're okay with picking a hard date, and for all of us sake.
Yeah.
This is like five weeks from now, two years, so that should be plenty of time to get everything in time, so.
I'll look a slow.
Joe. Mr. Carr, yeah. Don't you fire away at me, and I'll pass it on.
I'm just curious whether it's worth taking a look at some of the open sites that were rejected, because if they're just, we may have to relook at them. We also have, that's the, despite the fact that they said they're not going to the school department, you know, I don't know.
Not the school department per se, but, yeah, I mean, the school, not the school department, I think is what's...
Right, okay.
Yeah. Okay. Mr. Carr's question there about relooking at some of the sites that were rejected because they were too close?
That's what we're going to be doing at the hearing.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay.
What dates we looking at?
The 23rd.
I think July, Wednesday, the 23rd. How does that work?
That's okay.
Okay.
And 7 o'clock?
Seven.
Of course, do we do 7:30?
Can we do 7:30?
Whatever you want.
Yeah, 7:30 is just easier to...
So, we're talking the 23rd of July, 7:30, and the only condition will be that make sure our RF engineer is available, and if not, we'll arrange for another mutual date with you that works. Does that sound fair, so that this would be good?
Perhaps.
Tony?
Okay.
Yeah.
By the 13th?
That's, 13th is a Sunday, so...
Yeah.
14th.
14th, that, Monday.
Yes, no later than. Okay? So we're talking about continuing until Wednesday, July 23rd at 7:30 PM, with any additional information, letters, et cetera, submitted to Emily no later than Monday, the 14th.
Which happens to be Bastille Day, so we'd have a revolution.
So if you miss it, you're going to get the guillotine, but...
How about with regards to an agenda, or...
Do you expect to have Mr. Graves' report back before July 14th, and we would have access to that via email?
We can certainly, yeah, I think we can ask.
And the only other question I have is, based upon the willingness of the school department to at least entertain the prospect of a cell tower being located at Foster, and certainly there's a lot of hurdles that would have to be, to be hurdled, does it make any sense to ask Global or AT&amp;T to proffer some sort of offer or have a discussion with a member of the school committee in advance of that meeting? Because it seems to me if the, if the offer is for $12 a month for rent, I would assume they're going to run in the other direction very quickly. However, it's a couple hundred thousand dollars a month, they may stay at the table a little bit longer. Now, I know it's somewhere in between those numbers, but...
Here's a number somewhere.
Certainly, it would make some sense.
That's completely speculative. Let's not even discuss it right now. We're here to discuss the application again.
If I could just respectfully suggest that this speaks to intrusiveness with regard to the site.
Correct.
We believe that the Foster School is a least intrusive, less obtrusive site to locate a tower, given the need. And Mr. Keller, and Ms. Swinson, I'm sorry, let me correct that. Mr. Lawton suggested that the school was the most ideal location for the tower in terms of coverage, and we agree with that as well.
So, my view responding to that, Todd, I am not going to request the applicant make a presentation to the school. I think they will be guided by what they think are the appropriate legal standards for this application. And if that leads them to make, to approach the school, terrific, and if it doesn't, that's going to be their judgment.
My understanding, you're going to go out to an RFP.
So...
Right, in relation to the school, the school would have to put out a bid, so it's not like we could go and say, we want to pay you this much, let's get into a lease agreement. They're whole, they put out the entire package, lease agreement, say, this is the price, this is the agreement, take it or leave it. And so, until they do that, there's really nothing to even speak to them about. They know that we're interested in the area, so it would incumbent upon them to put out a bid. And if they did do that, then there'd be something to talk about until they done. They haven't done it thus far. It looks like, I mean, it was generally at least six months out before they would even address it, just even to get it to that point, just from, you know, who want to deal with that stuff, if they started it today. Even if they were even...
So, Tony, there's no reason for the back and forth. This board will make the determination about what's appropriate for this application.
Okay. Okay, items we want to discuss and clear up? The questions, Joe, that you posed on the, on the gap, how many homes, how many residents within the area that is being addressed, or where the significant gap is? The dropped call data, in summary of the dropped call data?
Yeah.
Oh, there's some information I'm seeing here in the file, Emily, maybe this came in for the planning board or something, but on the ice throw, because that was one of the issues that we hadn't really talked about, I think that's something that, yeah, something that we need to...
The butters had mentioned that, and that's something that I think, as I recall, was represented, would be studied, but we haven't seen any.
Right. Apparently, we have it, it's just...
Submitted, presented to the planning board last night, and also submitted here.
Just today, yeah.
Do we submit it today?
Yes. So, it's in the packet, but we, it's in the file, rather, but we haven't seen it.
We haven't, okay, we haven't...
So we'll get copies of that, so we can, so we can look at that. Just a question I want to throw out there. Can we do a monopole with interior antennas only, given the additional data that you've shown? If not, why not? I think that speaks directly to the aesthetics issue and minimizing the visual impact. I mean, we have, we have seen those in other applications in past years, so. As I think, you gentlemen interested in landscaping? That's part of the bylaw. I mean, I think we have testimony about plantings around, you know, some screenings and stuff. I think...
We didn't spend a lot of time with that last night, and I think there are conditions proposed by the planning board.
With the planning board?
All the way to the specific species.
Okay. I'm comfortable that they've handled that, so.
I think our agenda is, number one, to actually start off allowing the neighbors to do a presentation, because each time we have a meeting, we launch it to something else, and then they're pushed to the end. So I think that would be the first, and then you will have whatever they wanted to submit in advance, so I think we would give you the opportunity, not limited to anything now, because we don't have, don't know what their proposal, what their presentation's going to be, but we would certainly give you the courtesy of responding on the issues that you think are...
So that's what I would ask, is that, is that presentation going to be submitted to the board on, for the...
13th.
The 13th? 14th.
14th, I'm sorry.
And then we would be able to take a copy of that?
Yeah.
And let me share that.
Yeah.
Perfect.
And then I think we would be in a position to wrap up the record.
Absolutely. Okay. Anything else you have, Todd? Have I missed anything?
No.
Okay.
Oh, is there any issues on the appraisal?
Oh.
The appraisal.
Did you want to review that?
Put the next.
We've got kind of a rebuttal report.
Right, they just got the response to their report today.
Right, and that hasn't been...
They just really read it yet.
Yeah, no one's, that came in, I guess, today, the...
The response.
Response to your appraiser's report, one of the experts, I guess, was quoted in the...
Received that yesterday, and...
Right, so that's one of the reasons, I think, we should...
Right, that's one thing that we should probably address.
Would like us to have...
I think you should, you should respond as you think necessary to that, and we're not going to tell you how to do it, but if you want to have an expert, or just you respond, whatever you think is appropriate.
That's all I have.
Okay, I think that's all.
Okay.
I want to ask, so, so the next meeting is productive, and we have questions that we feel need to be answered, so that we can, you know, respond, whatever. Can that happen between now and then, so we're not again in the meeting, sort of asking questions that require some additional response that they're not prepared to provide at the meeting?
Is that expat?
And if that's kind of happening, then on the side of the...
Well, to the extent that you identified those questions in your presentation, for example, you have issues about effects on real estate values in the area, and so you've got some questions about that, you should include that in your presentation, your questions. So, for example, they didn't provide data on XYZ, so that they'll have that in advance, and they'll have an opportunity to respond. They are not obliged to respond to that ahead of time, so that you have a chance to respond yet again, so, or it'll just keep going on. So you should at least include those questions, and if you include the questions and they don't respond, then they will have been all noticed that you thought those were significant issues.
Sounds fair. Okay, so, we will see everyone on July 23rd.
Thank you all.
You'll get back to that... You'll get back to them if there's any date issue with our expert.
In case.
We might have one of those containers.